This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today is Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is now six oh two P. M. Before we proceed, I want to remind everyone of our rules of civility and decorum. Officials must first be addressed by the chair and not interrupt a speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Personal attacks, insults, displays of rudeness, and lack of respect are strictly prohibited. Disruptive behaviors from the audience, including but not limited to yelling, stamping of feet, and similar demonstrations are likewise prohibited. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be asked to be removed from the beating. City Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Mayor Penserga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Commissioner Woodrow Hay, who will be our minister for this evening, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Angela Cruz. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come tonight, Thanksgiving on our heart, for another day. We come this afternoon asking for your guidance. We ask for your wisdom and your support as we begin this business for the great city of Boynton Beach. Help us, Lord, to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and a neighborhood and a community. Nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace, Lord Jesus, as we make decisions that will affect the students, the staff, the faculty, alumni, friends, and all that live in this city. And continue, Lord, to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask all of these in the name of our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Let every heart say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Commissioner Hay, for stepping up to the plate, as always.
Anytime. You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is agenda approval, additions, deletions, or reorganizations. Let's begin with Commissioner Kelly. Are there any reorganizations, additions, or deletions from yourself?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Turkin?
I have nothing, Mayor.
All right, Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes, I'd like to move item seven B to after announcements, if possible.
Seven B to right after announcements? All right, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Let me move this here.
Seven B?
Seven B is on.
B as in boy.
You want to pull it from consent and move it up?
Yes.
All right, so seven B will be our last announcement or right after announcements. Was there anything else, Vice Mayor?
That's all, Mayor. Oh, wait, I do have some questions for staff, but that'll come later.
All right, excellent. Commissioner Hay?
No, I'm good.
All right, hearing nothing else, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
City Clerk, I guess, choose who you'd like to be the motion and the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion passes, agenda is amended. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to informational items by members of the city commission, and we do have a quasi judicial item, several, in this agenda, so I would also encourage you to include your disclosures as well. Let's begin on my right side this time, Commissioner Hay, informational items and disclosures.
I have no disclosures. I did attend the Coalition of, the Reader's Coalition luncheon today.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was, had a fantastic speaker. So I just encourage everybody to, to read to the kids. Also, I had the opportunity to read to the kids at Forest Park Elementary. My wife and I, along with some others, read to the kindergarten kids. And let me tell you, they should increase the salary of the teachers right now. Those kids can be a handful, man, I tell you. But we were able to, to engage, and we had a great time. And I just want to, want to thank them for that reading opportunity. That's it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Cruz?
No disclosures, besides the fact that I also attended that luncheon. Thank you to staff for getting a table and making sure that we're supporting literacy in Palm Beach County. I do have a question for staff, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time or later.
If it's a quick question, I would say just go for it.
Okay.
If it's a long discussion, we should add that to the agenda.
No, 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 just, just a quick question. So there's been a video rolling around in, on the internet about someone saying that, someone on an advisory board referring to having had leadership or an effect in regard to the Meadows Protective Covenant that was actually passed by the city commission. So I wanted to ask a member of staff the question of what role do advisory boards have in creating or passing protective covenants in the city? Not sure who would be the one to answer that question.
City Manager or Deputy City Manager?
Andrew Mack, Deputy City Manager. Typically, that is the purview of the commission. The boards are not involved. In this particular case, that was an item that was brought forth by the commissioner and was voted on by the commission. So that was a sole responsibility of the commission.
Okay, so it was the city commissioners that had the leadership and had the ability and the authority to make the Meadows Protective Covenant happen in the city of Boynton Beach?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Turkin, informational items and disclosures.
I did follow up with the applicant for eight A in reference to the Pierce. I did also attend the Dr. Seuss Day at Forest Park Elementary, and I got to tell you, Mayor, God bless you.
I saw the pictures.
Yeah, you know, it was, it was, it was really rewarding. It was awesome. You know, and God bless our teachers, God bless the faculty, staff for letting us do that, because it is, I couldn't say no to those kids. I would be the worst teacher in this school.
Oh, right.
And I did attend Palm Beach County Days with our city manager. And, you know, I'll say that I like to thank, you know, this commission, Mayor, because we have done a great job in the last year. And, you know, I can say without exaggeration that Boynton Beach is on the map. And, you know, we've done so much. And when people ask us where we were from, we said Boynton, and all we saw was smiles, because we've done a lot of great stuff, and, you know, there's a lot of good media that's, you know, that's going on, and people are excited about what we're doing here, and that's solely from the work that we're doing. So I appreciate you guys. We were also able to network with our county counterparts, and I'd say we developed some really strong relationships with them. And they're sick of Boynton also being overlooked. And so I can tell you, we're going to get a lot of support from the county. You know, we just need to draft and discuss what that's going to look like. In addition, you know, it's very interesting to learn how the state legislative process works. You know, it's, it's definitely a hustle and bustle, and, you know, what we identified with some of our appropriation requests is, you know, obviously, as you grow in politics, you know, everything becomes political. And so I think what this board needs to look at, if we want to, you know, achieve a similar success like Del Ray had of, you know, being four to four, four out of four for the appropriation requests, I think it would be good to look at four components and tailoring that for helping veterans, being one of the number ones that gets approval in the House, in the legislator, public safety, infrastructure, and parks. Those are the ones that are really getting traction and getting support. So I would challenge my colleagues to look at those for next year, next session. And, you know, we had a lot of good one-on-one FaceTime with Ballard Partners, our lobbyist firm, and they're very professional, you know, really took care of us. I have nothing but great things to say about Matt and Carlos, and really kind of walked us through what the process is. And I don't know, I don't think I'm missing anything else, and, you know, just be proud, because, you know, we're making a great name for ourselves, and, you know, we are, we are resurrecting the brand of Boynton Beach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I couldn't echo those sentiments anymore. Well said. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any disclosures. I do want to thank you, Mayor, for spearheading the City Hall Social. I think that that is, outside of our First Fridays and all of our fun events in the amphitheater, it was for being, I would say, a last minute, pulled together. It was very successful. I have continued to hear positive feedback from the residents that they felt, it felt so good to have this City Hall open and entertaining and having live music. And so I just want to thank you, because I know that that was something that you, you kind of spearheaded with staff, and staff for Gabby did an amazing job of really putting that together. And so thank you, City Manager, Mayor, for, for making that a success. It was fantastic. I also, last night, attended the virtual session of the FDOT presentation on Woolright Road. It didn't, I couldn't see participation, but it looked like it wasn't very well attended. I know they're doing the live one today, which is just over in the other building. But that information is available online, too, to see what that, what FDOT is proposing for that interchange. So if you're curious, I'm sure it's available through, through the links that are on our Facebook page as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, if I.
Yes, City Manager.
On the way up, actually, I'd forgotten to mention it, but I just want everyone to know that one of our firefighters had a major medical incident, and it's currently in the hospital. He's in ICU. I've known him for probably close to 20 years, great guy. But it's Adam Tury. He's been with, he's been with the BBFD for probably close to two decades. So I just would like everyone to keep his families and their thoughts and prayers, so.
Thank you for that update, and that is distressing and concerning to hear. I'll reach out to the family. Thank you, City Manager.
Chief, Chief Ruder, or we don't have a fire department representative here tonight, though. They're at the hospital.
Understood, as they should be. As for myself, my disclosures include that I've spoken with Jeff Burns and Nick Rojo of the Pierce. Their items are A through F. I've also spoken to Bonnie Miskel. They represent a interested party. And I just want to echo all the things that have been said. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. City Hall Social was an experiment, and what that said to us, if all of you were not able, if any of you were not able to attend, we had about 100-plus people show up, and people were chanting Boynton Beach. People were excited and happy to connect, to know the people at City Hall. And what I said in that event was, you know, not everything has to come through me. You can contact any of us, and I want you to know the faces to the various departments. They work for all of us, and we work together to serve the community. So I'm just so happy that was an excellent start. I hope that City Hall will be filled with more people from the public, not just, you know, not just the usuals, but new people getting involved into the city, and that City Hall will be filled also with music. So it starts off with jazz, maybe someday in the future it could be poetry and spoken word, you never know. But, you know, food and music always bring people together. So that's a great start. And Commissioner Turkin, thank you for your work in Tallahassee, representing us, and your connections and relationship building with the county. Speaking of the county, I do want to acknowledge, in my time in office, I can't tell you how many county commissioners have visited us here at City Hall. To my recollection, I've only had one, and that was from County Commissioner Marcy Woodward. So I want to acknowledge that, because that is a huge sign, right? They're, they're coming to us, they're forming relationships. She met with me as well as our city manager here, and I suspect she met several of you either in Tallahassee or at the pickleball unveiling event. So I appreciate when officials show up early. They're there to partner, right? So thank you, Commissioner Woodward, if you're listening. I appreciate the effort. As some of you know, I always make it a point to now recognize a staff member, and, because we have so many good people in the city, and they don't always know, right? The public doesn't always know what's happening behind the scenes, and not everyone gets all the credit. But you know what? Public servants, they do their work, they don't always get the credit, and they don't ask for the credit. But I want them to know that we appreciate you. We love that you are part of our team, we want to keep you here, and I hope you continue to grow with us. Today, I asked, I asked someone to invite this person and let them know they're coming to give a presentation, and they think they're here to give a presentation. But you are actually here to be recognized. And let me just say a few words about this person. I'm talking about Salika Brown. Salika Brown is our Development Services Manager with Development Services. She was hired in 2013. She's worked her way up to application technician, to business tax and zoning manager, all the way now to Development Services Manager. And what really stood out to me about Salika was that she went above and beyond to help a family get back closer, back into their home. That meant the world to me, that meant the world to that family. And Salika, I could not be more proud of the work you're doing. I hope you love it here, we love you, and we have a special guest this evening. That family that you've been helping, they're here this evening. And so can I call up Ms. Diane Rivers to say a few words?
How sweet.
Oh, love speaking to the microphone, please, and state your name for the record.
I thought I was loud enough. Hi, hi, neighbors, hi, everybody. I've been a resident here for 10 years, 10 years. And 10 years ago, when we first moved here, you say Boynton Beach, people was like, where? And now, like you just mentioned, you guys.
Ms. Rivers, could you just speak to the commission?
Oh, okay.
Per, per our protocol, please, yes, to the commission, so everyone can hear you, yes.
I was just saying, I'm proud to be a resident here, and I'm proud because of all the changes and all the work and what I've seen all of you done, especially in this last year. But I'm really happy that Salika was someone I was directed to in the middle of all the chaos of my home building. We're 15 months living in a room, waiting for a home, waiting for permits, waiting for construction. The stress level was so high, we had challenges health-wise, we had a lot of things going on in our life that was detrimental for us to be in our home, and nobody seemed to care. But soon as they got ahold of Salika, not only did she care, this is last June, every month she was checking in. She didn't have to do that, she didn't have to follow up. Are you there? Did you get this? Did you hear that? And then, this is our first time building a new home. So there's a lot of technical stuff we didn't understand. Of course, the construction workers didn't have time. And she filled us in on so much of what was next, what to expect, what to do, that we now finally have our CEO, and we can move in our house soon as FPL finishes what they're doing. And that has made us so, so happy. We just want to present her with a gift tonight. That's okay.
Absolutely. And Michael, if you wanted to say a few words, too, you're, you're welcome as well.
Not too good in speeches, but we appreciate her and God bless her. And God bless everybody here, you know, for recognizing us and.
And the mic.
For recognizing us and helping everybody, including me and my wife. And she's a beautiful woman, and I love her with all my heart. I love you guys, too, as well.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'm not too good in speeches, so.
Salika, come on up, Salika.
Salika.
It probably would have been two more years. We just want to share the plaque with you guys that we got her. Yet, being at this International Woman Day was yesterday. I really think this is appropriate for her. It says, "You're a dreamer, she's a believer, she's a doer and achiever," and you can't beat that nowadays with some of the way people work. So, Salika, thank you so much. The rest, you can open yourself. But I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody, and thank you, Salika, again.
Gotcha.
Moving on to announcements, community and special events and presentations. The first item is a proclamation for the month of March as Women's History Month. The proclamation will be accepted by Ashley Cassicero from the League of Women Voters of Palm Beach County. Did I say your last name right? The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, served courageously in the military. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home, and American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movements, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, I, Ty Penzerga, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of March, two thousand and twenty-three, as Women History Month. Ashley and others, if you would like to come up, take a picture and say a few words? All right, let me come down. Would any member of the commission like to come down with me to take a group picture real quick?
Of course.
Okay. Come on down.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
All right, let's do half and halves on each side.
All right, that's good.
All right, no, we should stand in the middle, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you should hold it. There's always more. Okay. Thank you so much.
Mayor, do you want them to? Yes. Feel free to say your word.
I'm Kathy Gunlock. I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Palm Beach County, and I want to thank you so much for this proclamation. And I also want to thank you all for the service that you provide your community. Public service is an amazing job, but also a difficult job. And at the league, our motto is to empower voters and to defend democracy, and the best way to do that is to remind your citizens to vote in the municipal elections on the 14th. If we can be of any service, please feel free to contact us. And again, thank you for this honor, and thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our second and final proclamation for the evening. It is to proclaim the month of March as Irish-American History Month. The proclamation will be accepted by Al Fox of the Ancient Order of Hybernians. I hope I'm saying that correctly, and if not, please do correct me. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had immigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in the Americans' War for Independence, five signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish descent, and three signers were Irish-born. Irish-Americans helped to fashion a system of government for a young nation. Twenty-two presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish-American heritage, 22. And whereas the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators, three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were Irish military officers. And whereas Father Richard Arthur, an Irish-born priest from Limerick, who was appointed parish priest for St. Augustine in 1597, and judge of La Florida, established the first public school in America and opened it to both boys and girls of all races. And whereas Irish-Americans, since America's inception, have provided and continue to provide leadership and service to the nation's political, business, and religious establishments, it is fitting and proper to celebrate the rich cultural heritage and the many valuable contributions of Irish-Americans. Now, therefore, I, Ty Penzerga, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim this month of March, 2023, as Irish-American Heritage Month.
I have a few words to say.
How are you, sir?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'm not quite as eloquent as our last speaker. She did an excellent job. I have to read what I have to say. Mayor Penzerga, city commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, De Aguit, names hello. On behalf of the Irish-American community in Florida, I would like to express my gratitude for your kind consideration in designating March as Irish-American Heritage Month. St. Patrick's Day is without question the biggest celebration of a national day across the globe. Throughout the world, people will be celebrating this holiday and proclaiming themselves Irish for the day. This proclamation coincides with festivities that are currently underway as Irish-Americans once again gather to celebrate their heritage throughout the state of Florida. During the month of March, Irish Floridians proudly reflect on the legacy of their Irish forebears, who have contributed significantly in the areas of education, business, sports, literature, science, engineering, medicine, law enforcement, and the arts. These are just some of the contributions that have been made, not only by the Irish, but by so many ethnic groups who came to the United States from the four corners of the world and have helped to shape this great country of ours. As the current president of our Palm Beach Division of AOH, which is the largest Irish organization in the world, tracing its roots back to the 1500s, I would like to acknowledge the esteemed honor Mayor Penzerga and your city commissioners have bestowed upon all Irish-Americans living within this country, as well as the great state of Florida. Thank you, and have a blessed St. Patrick's Day.
The next item is an announcement. The Ninth Annual Rally for the Cure Tennis Tournament will be held on Saturday, March 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Boynton Beach Tennis Center located at Congress Avenue Barrier-Free Park, that's 3111 South Congress Avenue. To register, visit the Recreation and Parks Department website, wemaklifefund.com, or call the Boynton Beach Tennis Center at 561-742-6575. Again, that's a Ninth Annual Rally for the Cure Tennis Tournament. The next announcement is that Vince Wilfork will have a speaking engagement at the Zell Hester Jr. Community Center, 1901 North Seacrest Boulevard, at 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday, March 15, 2023. Boulevard at 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday, March 15, 2023. He will be speaking on his journey of making it to the NFL to inspire youth and young adults to reach for their dreams. The event is free and open to the public. Again, this is Vince Wilfork. The next item on the agenda is an update presentation on the Eco Park from our city engineer, Mr. Gary Dunmire. Good evening, Mr. Dunmire.
Good evening, Mayor. With this presentation, oh, there it is. I have a PowerPoint slide. I would be remiss, as an engineer, for the next slide not to be an aerial photograph of the location map. So if we go there, this is our project. It's located just on the south side of Minor. It's about a half mile east of Congress Avenue and a quarter mile west of High Ridge Road. Quantum Boulevard is at the south, and there is an existing entrance off of Quantum Boulevard right there. So if we'll go to the next slide, please. I've included this slide because I wanted to show the different phases of this project. There are three phases. The first phase is completely paid for with a grant, and that is what we're aiming to build with this when we advertise it later this month. Phase one's divided into four phases, and I'll explain that in a moment. But phases two and three are also shown, and the phase three is basically the littoral map, and phase two is going to be the area outside of the walkway. And I want to take a moment to show you in phase one, 1B, there is a, the red lines on the map indicate that ADA, it's a 10-foot ADA asphalt path. And basically, what that's going to do is it's going to connect both parking lots. In a couple of slides, I'll talk about the parking lots. But with phase 1B, you'll notice that there's a big open area with the paved areas, and then those four orange stars that you see around the asphalt path represent a fallen log bench. They're going to be set there for places to rest and also for kids to play balance beam on. And then phases 1C is the area that's over the existing park. You'll notice the orientation of the map's changed a little bit. The north side is, or the north arrow points to the right side of the screen. Therefore, the existing parking lot is going to be on your left, and that's on the south. But the pink area represents the existing paths. There are several existing paths in this park, but the pink areas are the ones that are going to be enhanced and made more available for walking and more easy for walking. And then phase 1D, we have some littoral plantings that will serve to make sure that we have great water quality in that existing lake. And if we go to the next slide, please, Manny? So phase 1A is typical of this. This is a parking lot that we're installing that connects to Minor Road. It will be gated. You can see that there's a green fence and an orange fence. The green fence is a split rail fence, and the orange fence, which is around the parking lot here, and also around the remainder of the perimeter, helps keep motorized vehicles in the areas that they're designated to. What's special about this plan is there's a chicky hut as you leave the parking lot that you walk through, provides a little bit of shade. There's a place to park your bike. And then there's also an area that has a, what we call a rail gate maze, so people won't be able to get in with vehicles that shouldn't, doesn't, or that can't maneuver the gate maze. So bicycles and scooters, they are intended to be able to use this asphalt path. The parking lot, as I said, is going to be gated, and there will also be a light there. Depending on the need for security, that light will typically go off when the park closes, but if there's problems in the park, we'll keep it on at night for the police department. So it'll be easier for them to keep an eye on the parking area. If we can go to the next slide, please? So with this one, please don't pay any attention to the numbering. What I really wanted this slide to show you was inside of the asphalt path, what the plantings were going to look like. The green area is going to be sable palm clusters, pine trees, and understory trees, and then the area that's not green within the asphalt path area is going to be open meadow area with ground cover. Next slide, please? Okay, this is where our asphalt path connects to our existing parking lot. So again, as I showed in that other slide, there's going to be a chicky hut, which is denoted by the building C there, and then a trash can and a bicycle rack. Again, there's also going to be the maze to keep unauthorized vehicles out of the park. And if we go to the next slide? This is our schedule. There's a little typo on here, but I'll get to that in a moment. So our schedule shows that basically we are 100% done with design at the moment. We're moving into the permitting and procurement phase. We're going to put this plan out on the street for bidding. And then it says April, but it's June that we expect this project to go to construction, and we should be complete by September, providing there's no rain delays. Next slide? Now I'm available for questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dunmire. I have several questions. I assume the commission does as well. This would be the jewel of not just our city, but of the region, considering it's about close to 60 acres collectively. First, I noticed that we have, or you propose a new construction of a parking lot. What is the purpose of that new parking lot?
Parking lot, Manny, if you want to go back to that slide, I want to say it's three or four. There it is. The purpose of this access is to allow people to enter the park from Minor, from Minor Road. There's a lot of people that I think will prefer to access the park this way, and it'll also take traffic off of Quantum Boulevard, which I think's also a preferred method. This, with the parking lot in this location, it also leads us to have some freedom in the future. Should we want to do something different in this area, there will be a place for people to access the park.
I mean, right off the bat, I can tell you that I am comfortable with the idea of the construction of a new parking lot. And the reason for that is, right next to it is the FOP Lodge, which is vacant during the day, if I'm not mistaken. Have you reached out to them, or have you considered the possibility that perhaps people could park there? How many parking spaces are this in the proposal?
I want to say there's, I want to, maybe 15 spaces there?
Okay.
But I can certainly reach out to the FOP and see if that's going to work. I'm sure there's some mitigating liability that we can work out, and?
Yeah. My concern is, why would we spend the money and, you know, destroy more trees when just not too far from it, there's already a parking lot, and during the day, no one's using it? So if it was possible, if possible, if we had some sort of shared use agreement, and then, of course, they use it in the evening, this is very minimal number, 15, you said?
Right.
There might be a possibility to, you know, save that money and spend it elsewhere, enhancing the park in some other capacity.
Well, the one thing I, we did look at, there is a wetland that's just on the east side of that project. And, you know, we're trying to open up the whole west side of this, of this park. And with the wetland, with its proximity, it just, it makes it, it doesn't fit really well. But, I mean, I don't mind trying to look at some sketches and see if there's some way we can make that work for you.
I would greatly appreciate it. I just don't want to go down this route and spend that money if we don't have to. Let's explore that option, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And then we'll, we'll take this approach next. I also wanted to ask you about the financing, because I know we received a state grant in addition to the money set aside by the Quantum Board, or the then Quantum Board. What will that be funding exactly? And which phases will it be funding? Is it covering all phases, some phases?
So phase one is completely covered by the funding that's available. We've included phase two and three, and they're going to be bid at the same time, in case there's extra funds or the price of the project comes in less than what we think it's going to come in at. It gives us some availability to, to give you as our leader options. Can we find the extra money to build the rest of the park, or do we want to postpone that and build it at another time? Or phases two and three. So, so yes, phase one is completely covered by, by all the money that's available.
But will it consume all of it?
Yes. Yes.
So basically, unless we're under budget, we don't have any money set aside for phase two?
That's correct.
Okay, that's important to, for us to know. So we keep that in mind in the next budget cycle.
Right. Well, phases two and three will probably be in the range of around $650,000. So that's our target.
Okay. And does this include any fencing, anything to protect the area? I know people have come in there with their motorbikes and, of course, throwing garbage and all of that.
That's true. Here, you can see in the orange, every place that we've got a six-foot tall fence, it's going to be a chain link fence. It's a little small for the public to see. I recognize that now. And then there's also some split rail fence. So as you zoom in, or you go back to the photo of the parking lot, you can see where the split rail fences are. And so it is definitely intended to keep people where they're supposed to be and keep automobiles and motorized vehicles where they're supposed to be.
All right. I'll end my questions for now, but, you know, I just want to say thank you for your work. I do agree that by having access on Minor Road, that'll alleviate the traffic going near the neighborhoods. That's a good thing. I just don't want to, you know, spend money and take more trees down if we don't have to, right? We do that as an absolute last resort. Let's open the floor for questions and comments. Let's begin with Commissioner Hay, and then we'll go around the days.
I do agree with, with the mayor. Gary, just one question for you. What's your timeline look like? Do you know?
Yeah, I think we'll be able to start construction of this project in June and finish it up before September, or in the month of September.
Okay, very good. Do you know of any particular obstacles that you, challenges?
No, we do have to relocate some gopher tortoises. We're exploring the option now of doing the least invasive thing, which is put them on the existing side. And then when we remove the fence that separates the east and the west, those turtles will be able to find their way back home. And they'll only be away from their homes for probably three months, if that. So, yeah, I mean, those are little obstacles that we look at and we try to ameliorate as best we can.
Have you received any pushback in that area from residents about?
We had a design charrette early in the process, and so public input, and basically we gave the public what they asked for. And so the responses I've been getting have been positive, and I attribute that to the guidance you've given me. Very good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for your presentation. I think, Mayor, you made a great point. I know that I've been to the, I've been to that area before, and I have seen how there have been, like, the dirt bikes on the actual sand showing that people are already doing that. So, you know, I just wanted to tell my colleagues just to be mindful of that, to make sure that when residents are going there, there's not going to be any kind of issues or accidents or any of that sort of thing. Just make sure that we're protecting that area to not be used by any motorized vehicles. And then I have spoken to Casey Young before when we did a tour about the possibility of having, like, kayaks on the water. Is that something that we're accounting for? Is that something that is in the plan? Or just thinking of, like, yes, it's great to ride our bikes and walk, but can we do something different on the west side of the city? We don't have any other activities.
During the public input, the public wanted this to be a passive use park. I suspect once it's built, and they see where the parking lot is juxtapositioned to the parkside condominium, that there might be a willingness for them to, to open it up. Because, I mean, this is going to be a blue way path for us. I mean, the waterway is right there, and it's something that I know the commission wants, and, but the public wasn't behind it initially. I have faith that they'll see the benefits, that kind of amenity.
Some of my constituents that have kids are actually for it and are wanting that as well. So, I mean, obviously, we speak to different people, and different people come to the meetings. Most people, being honest, don't really show up to the meetings. They're busy. They have kids. They have families. They have jobs. So it's something that I wanted to put in, into the mind of the planning of the park. And if that were to be the case, where would it be? Are we setting up, like, space for it?
Manny, if you don't mind going back to that one, the parking lot that's to the north? That's the one. That, that whole area, just to the west of that or to the left on your screen, that's the area that I think we could have a ramp that leads down to the canal bank.
Awesome. Thank you.
Let me piggyback on that, Vice Mayor. You make a great point. Gary, a long time ago, I was under the impression that as part of the design, there would have been a kayak ramp. I don't see that here. What happened to it?
Well, we had it on the plan that we showed the public, and that's the part that the public, they didn't want the boardwalks. They didn't want anything on the lake that's to the east. And so to get this project pushed along and to, we wanted to make as many people as happy as possible. And, and we were able, we were able to do that and still get the full reward of the grant.
Okay. I remain hopeful, because the truth is, there are families that have boat ramps on that area. So this would be a kayak ramp, not a boat ramp, and it's not allowed activity. In any case, thank you, Gary. And I would like to ask, though, if you could provide a breakdown of how the money will be spent?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm curious, for example, is there lighting? Is there security besides the fencing? What other things are we paying for to enhance this area? And sometimes it's a little thing, so?
Yeah, it's enumerated in the cost estimate, I'll say, absolutely.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Turkin?
Um, yeah, I had the deadline question. Kayak ramp, I don't know. I'm not going to argue with people in someone else's district, you know, they don't want it, they don't want it. But I do think that park is beautiful. There is a lot of wildlife there. And so I would say, you know, we can't just think about the green space, obviously, but we do need to think about the gopher tortoises also, because there is an abundant population there. And so the least invasive, you know, I would personally, you know, would appreciate, and I know tortoises would too.
By the way, you sound so much better than last.
You know, it kind of, it kind of makes sense this time.
Right, absolutely.
But no, thank you guys for putting this together. It seems like a pretty fast timeline.
We put a lot of thought into it and got a lot of work so far, so.
All right. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. Gary, I was at one of those charrettes that we had here at the city, and I, we did talk, there was talk about the kayak, and I don't, I don't remember it being as much of a negative as, or completely off the table. I think the question that came up, or that I remember from the presentation, was that they're not really sure because that canal is owned and maintained by the Lake Worth Drainage District, that we run into issues where we weren't sure if they were going to, because it's such a narrow canal, that the way that we would have to do a natural kayak launch would have to be more of a gradual. And so I remember coming out of that meeting that there was questions as far as whether or not Lake Worth Drainage District would even allow us to put that in a potential phase at one point later on. I remember it being one of those things where it would potentially be a phase three later on down the line. But the big question was whether or not it was even an option with the narrow canal that we're talking about. So is that still, have we talked to Lake Worth?
No, we haven't talked to Lake Worth. But you're right, that, that was part of the conversation. And I do think you're right. I think it would have to be a wider area that gently sloped to the water's edge. And so we probably have to use more than just that area to the west. We'd probably have to extend it south a little bit. So I think there are some challenges there, but I think, Lake Worth, I think we can probably come to terms with them, because that bank is armored on that canal right there. And so we'd have to remove some of that armament in order to gain access to the waterway. But, you know, we'd assume responsibility, and we'd have to rebuild the canal. And, you know, there's a little bit of expense with that. And so with, with the money we had available, too, it made sense that we tried to address this in a future phase.
Right. And so that was one of the things that we even had talked about in that meeting is that that's something that would be closer to Minor Road. So it would almost, you know, with there being a separate parking lot or access off of Minor Road, it would remove that kayak trailering, maneuvering, muller cars on Quantum, where Minor doesn't have the, you know, the homes that you're in the residential area that we're dealing with. So my only concerns, and Mayor, I totally respect your thoughts on the parking, and we want to save money where we can. The FOP Lodge rents out their lodge, so we don't know from day to day when they're going to be using it, when it's going to be rented out. I don't know what they have in their contracts with their renters. So we also don't want to run into a situation where we're fighting for parking for our park. So I don't want to waste money. I don't want to cut down trees that we don't need to. But that's one of my concerns, is that I don't want to then have this, you know, this, this entry to the park from Minor that we can't access. And then we're, then we don't have the money to build the parking and to put the access. I was really excited about the entrance to Minor, because a lot of District Four accesses that would access that park from Minor Road. And, you know, with making Minor Road, you know, more pedestrian-friendly or focusing on that, I can envision that families would be, you know, riding their bikes from District Four into the Eco Park down Minor. And so I want to make sure that we're not, we're not, we're, we're looking at all the options. And so I'm fine with looking at other options, but those are my concerns with kind of counting on, you know, the FOP, who's independent. They rent out their space for events that I don't want to run into where we don't, we're then fighting for parking, and then nobody uses it for that reason. Gary, I heard you mention about the, I know that there was going to be some with the lake space during that meeting. We also talked about there being kind of fishing access, and maybe potentially some docks or? and maybe potentially some docks or what's the, where is that in? Is that something that got scrapped and so?
It is. It did get brought up and hopefully I can find it in my minutes that that was one of the items that took the most objections from the public. So, right. And so we did remove the boardwalk. People didn't want anybody fishing from that lake. And so that's why the boardwalk was pulled out.
Okay. Okay. And then, so there will be no fishing from those lakes? Is that?
I don't intend to put no fishing signs.
Okay. Okay.
Unless you guys tell me to.
My son is always looking for spaces where he can go fishing. So that's, you know, it's one thing. Okay, so, and then Phase Two, I know right now it's not on the table and you're financing that sort of thing. Or what are we doing as far as keeping that in the forefront for grants and because this is part of the Eco Park, I know we're, there are a lot of grant opportunities out there for.
That's a very good point. And so having plans that are fully developed makes obtaining grants that much easier. So having these plans sitting on the shelf is, it's good news for us. It puts us in an advantageous spot.
Okay, great. I think those are all my questions because I think everyone else had concerns about the gopher tortoises, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think you rose an excellent point about the parking at the FOP Lodge. Personally, I don't know what their use frequency is, so I just had to ask. I just don't want to cross that line if we don't have to, right? So please do find out, Mr. Dunmire, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I like the out of the box thinking. Thank you.
All right. Are there any follow-up questions for my colleagues, Vice Mayor?
Last comment for me, just, you know, thinking that it is on the west side of the city and, you know, for the commissioners on the west side of the city, I would focus on, I would like to see if we can recommend to you to connect with the Lake Worth Drainage District. I know that our police has done that in the past and created an agreement very expeditiously. And I see him back there. Thank you, Chief, for that before. He's in a different conversation, but yeah, I just wanted to thank them for that because it was really helpful and it actually made a difference to my constituents. So, you know, for the whole city, I think I can speak for everyone when I say that it is a positive thing to be proactive and to, you know, do your due diligence. And if there's something that could, that is something that the commission wants and, you know, our constituents are saying, you know, maybe the people that showed up at the meeting, they're not interested in that per se, but the constituents in my part of the city are saying, well, we don't have anything to do on our side of the city. We would love to have kayaks. It's not motorized. What can we do from a staff perspective to make that a reality, to make sure that we're starting those conversations? And I can guarantee you, it's not that hard. It's pretty easy. They have created agreements with us in the past and I think that they would be happy to work with you as well. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
So in the next 30 days, I'll try to schedule a meeting.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Gary. The next item on the agenda, we agreed to move up item seven B to right after announcements, which would be now. Seven Bs, proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash zero three one, approve and authorize the city manager to sign an end user license agreement including addendum and procure from Mark forty-three, Inc. For this is for the computer aided dispatch and records management system as described in their proposal. Good evening, Chief. It's not on.
Joe DiGiulio, please, Chief. How you guys doing?
All right.
So we're really excited about the partnership with Mark forty-three and our CAD and RMS. We spoke about it before a few months ago about our previous RMS.
Can you explain what CAD and RMS is?
I'm going to get into it. So we're really excited about it. It's really crucial to our operations. Computer aided dispatch is CAD. It's how we send our units out, fire department, police to call us for service. And RMS is Records Management System. And that's how we utilize our, from crime statistics to how we deploy resources. So basically the CAD and RMS kind of drives our operation. So it's completely integral to what we do on a day in and day out basis. The agreement is actually with a company called Mark forty-three. It presents a savings of about $40,000 from the previous RMS vendor. So that's definitely a plus. It also is a lot more intuitive. It's going to make the officers and the dispatcher's job a lot more easier. Less keystrokes, less time looking at your screens. That means more time providing services to the community. So that's a huge win for us. Also, there's a lot of convergence as well. They'll be able to work with a lot of our current systems like Axon for our body cams as well as our anchor cameras. I want to thank Chief Zeller and Carl Maracata for bringing this home because it was something that was extremely important and they pivoted very quick on it. And I also have the reps from Mark forty-three here too. So I'm going to turn it over to them real quick.
Good evening and please state your name for the record.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Denny Fisher. I am the Eastern Regional, Eastern U.S. Regional Sales Director. My colleague, Tabi Lopez, is the Southeastern Account Executive and covers Florida. He lives out of Fort Lauderdale. We're happy to be here. We thank you so much for your time and consideration. We thank the Police Department and the Fire Department for their lengthy process and evaluation and finally landing on Mark forty-three to trust us with this very important project for the public safety departments.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Let's turn now to my colleagues for questions and comments. And let me just begin by opening up. Chief, I'll be supporting this. This is obviously an integral part of your business. Naturally, you know, tell us why you need this. What's wrong with what you have now?
Well, the current vendor, our RMS or CAD, right now it's in the cloud. It wasn't meant to be in the cloud. And so it's in a hybrid environment and it's just, it's not the right fit for us. It's not working to the capacities we need it to be. You know, we want to be a high performing organization, provide the proper services to the community. We just feel that it's just not the right fit.
All right. Questions and comments from my colleagues. Let's begin this side. Commissioner Kelly.
Chief, do we have an existing contract with the previous provider that we are running into by canceling or are we, is that passed or?
Well, a few months ago, we actually got a credit from the current vendor. And to this day, we still haven't gone live with the new system. We're still in basically the, I don't want to say trial and error stage of it, but we're not fully live. We're not, we didn't get the green light yet. So we're on a basically a month to month contract until we can transition over to a new RMS and CAD.
Okay. My second question, do you know, you may not know, I may have to talk to Mara about it. Is this an expense that PD shares with FD or is this an expense that the Police Department bears itself?
Police Department covers it.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Turkin.
So I'm a big fan of anything that will innovate technology to service more face time for our residents. One of the things I did and learned on the campaign trail over a year ago, about a year ago, was that this, the record system was inefficient and you spend a lot of your times on your computer, a lot of your time on your computer versus engaging with the community, you know, patrolling, et cetera, you know. When we were at Palm Beach County days, there was obviously a lot of different departments going to lobby at the state level for whatever reasons they had. But I asked, you know, about this and I didn't get one negative piece of feedback. And so I'm going to support this and, you know, I think it's important. There's some things you can't replace and that's the, you know, face to face interaction. And I think this will allow, you know, our officers to have more of that face to face interaction and build trust in the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief, your response to Commissioner Kelly is, or was the answer I was looking for. I can't tell you how many dollars, how many millions of dollars we've spent on the previous system. So it's for me, very disappointing to know that after all this time, after all the money that has been spent, you're telling me it's not even fully functional. And we have come to this point that we need change and we have to spend this money to do what should have been done in the beginning. And somebody needs to say it. So there you go. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Cruz.
I'm supportive of this. Obviously, we want to make sure we continue to have efficient operations and we have a better system for the data. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hank.
I too will be voting for this, Joe, and I thank you and your staff for stepping up to the plate and addressing this because it's long overdue. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, this has been going on since probably July, August of two thousand and twenty-one. And we're still, we're still at the, at the, at the starting line.
City Manager, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something. I know we're fortunate to have Chief DiGiulio as our Chief of Police. We oftentimes, you get academics and you get practitioners of your profession and we're fortunate to have a mix of both. So with that being said, I was fortunate enough to attend one of the demonstrations of Mark forty-three. I found the interface so simplistic to use. I know there's a mobile also application to this product that we're getting. So compared to the other RMS systems that I've seen, Spillman and now Motorola, I don't know why they chose to do the cloud based system, but from a practical standpoint, we're fortunate to have a police chief that's pragmatic and takes a common sense approach to bringing in new technology. So with that, I say, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You're awesome, Chief. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I said earlier, thank you so much for the, for creating the partnership with the Lake Worth Drainage District. I just wanted to make sure you heard it because I know you worked like immediately hard and made sure to make that happen. You know, it's a different topic, but just thank you. To you and your team.
Any other final follow-up comments or questions for my colleagues? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve proposed resolution R twenty-three dash zero three one. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz. I heard a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public audience. Again, each person is allowed three minutes. This is a time for you to be heard. This is not a Q and A. As always, address your comments to the commission as a whole, not to any individual in the days. Or in the audience, personal attacks, insults are all strictly prohibited. After we conclude with those in person, we will proceed with those online. For those of you online, we will take digital hands up until the end of the very last person in the chamber. All right, where's my timer? One second. All right, please begin when you're ready and state your name for the record.
Kevin Yeoh, one three oh five via Depepe. I own numerous houses around City of Boynton Beach. As you know, I came here several times. I own a unit called one hundred via Lugano, Circle Unit two oh three, Boynton Beach border, three, three, four, two, six. My condominium was stolen from me, along with the seventeen other people. How it's happened? I, this is my D. This is my D to the garage and this is my monthly mortgage payment. And this is what the perpetrator, perpetrator stole my house by filing with the Palm Beach County Clerk of Court. Tell them in writing that they don't own my property, but somehow the title was changed. So it's a fraudulent title fraud. I called the border Department of Law Enforcement. I called the State Attorney's Office. I write to them. I even complete criminal charges. An affidavit. All I need is starting point from City of Boynton Beach Police Department said, this nice elderly lady, Chinese American lady came and she produced this, her D, her garage D and her monthly mortgage payment. And the perpetrator acknowledged they don't own the property and there's a criminal complaint against them. And that's Northland Lugano LLC. There are seventeen other people. They got evicted, including me. They used a fraudulent D and evicted me from my own place. So if I go back there, they say you are trespassing. You will be arrested. So that's very important. It's of public importance. Can you believe it? Your condominium can be stolen? This is called property title fraud. And I have reported this to Commissioner, County Commissioner several times and they all agree it's a criminal. And they had me send all the documents to Clerk of Court inspectors. But everything had to start from here, City of Boynton Beach Police Department. And I would say, I'm very, very grateful to the City of Boynton Beach Department Police Officers. Because when I needed help, I pick up nine one one, they come like that, saved me many times. Okay? So it's not about complaining about City of Boynton Beach Department. I just need to have one of them say, this lady show up with all the evidence, please investigate. That's all. We don't have that kind of resource and power to do this call. May I have one more minute?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. Want to invite everyone. I've put together a wonderful event. Catherine's smiling. She's known about it for about a month or so now with the City of Boynton Beach. This is working with the City of Boynton Beach, sister cities and an environmental theme. I'm not sure if you're aware, but approximately, we're in the agriculture industry ranges between number one and number three as our top employer in the state of Florida. And so what we're doing is combining the sister city art project that's coming up for our high school kids. We're trying to get the word out about that. We're going to show a very eco-friendly movie, which is called Kiss the Ground. It's all about the need to maintain our soil quality, which is of course is important to us in Palm Beach County. As I don't know if you know, but we grow almost the entire nation's fruit and vegetable winter crop in our county every year. Yes. So our dirt is incredibly important and maintaining that. We are now starting to get more than one generation away from people whose families were farmers. So we have kids who don't know how to grow a seed. So we're going to have CJ McCartney from the Wildflower Foundation out speaking. She's an amazing speaker. You're going to love her. We're going to have a presentation encouraging all the high school kids to sign up for the art competition and submit art, but we're going to have vendors out there. We're going to have food trucks and of course the free movies. So I'm announcing this. These cards are in the back. I'm still talking to you, even though I'm showing to them. So I'm not in trouble. So you can look for this. Yes, this is Eleanor's handiwork. Isn't it beautiful? Very distinctive. So you'll be seeing these all over the city hall and you'll see this all over social media. They told me that within the first hour, they got over eleven yeses to come to this event. I'm going to be sending, as soon as Eleanor sends me the digital version, I'm going to be sending this out to the Wildflower Foundation. They actually get people from all over the state to come to these events. So you will have free plants, free seeds. Kids can learn, kids and adults can learn how to plant. And you'll get a free movie. It'll be great. It's a huge award winner. I highly encourage everyone to come see it. So this is again on Friday, March twenty-fourth from six to nine. And please come out and there will be other local civic groups giving out plants or selling plants. And we have a vendor as of this afternoon who will be selling native plants, which goes along with CJ's presentation. And I said, I'm going to tell you, you really want to come because she is a fabulous speaker and hopefully the city will pick her up for Earth, the Earth Day presentation for her second part of her presentation. Thank you for your time. See you on the twenty-fourth. These are in the back.
Thank you. Next speaker. We have two podiums. We'll go back and forth. Good evening.
Good evening. To the dais. My name is Evangeline Ward and I'm a native Boyntonian. I've been here all my life. And the reason I'm coming tonight, it's a very important concern and it's very dear to my heart. And it's about our children and our schools and their safety. Okay? And the reason I'm coming, you know, when you investigate certain things, the Florida statute three sixteen eighteen ninety-five, that's the establishment of schools, speed zones enforcement. That's from the Department of Transportation. And our schools in District Two, I want the City of Boynton Beach because the municipality, we're responsible for getting this done and the Police Department. And most of the areas around the schools, they've just done something recently at Galaxy. I guess I talk too much and they got tired of me talking. And, but in at Ponteana, we don't even have adequate crosswalks throughout all of our schools in District Two. We only have one speed bump. We don't even have adequate crosswalks to say that this is a school zone. We don't even have the necessary flashes and everything. And the reason I'm pushing it because when I bought this up one time, I was told we need to wait until I finish the project at. we need to wait until I finish the project at Forest Park Elementary. But I want you to understand, Forest Park Elementary has more speed bumps and everything than the whole entire school and all schools in Boynton Beach. And so my concern is, we don't have adequate safety. We don't have sidewalks. Our children have to walk on eaveswaves about two, you know, feet. They don't have sidewalks to walk on. And you don't understand, that's a safety issue when you've got people running up and down the road like they're on the end of 500 and everything. And one area, we even had a citizen over near behind Ponteana, somebody flipped and totaled her car while it was parked in the yard. So you can understand how fast they're going. So my thing is, why don't we have it? And when will we have it? That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I do know our chief of police is somewhere in the back, so I would recommend connecting with him so we can get some immediate answers today. Next speaker, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Much. Good evening, everyone. My name's Nicholas Giacalone, and I applied to be on the Education and Youth Advisory Board. I thank you all for taking me for consideration. I thank you for your great work recently throughout Boynton. It's been the best. I've lived here my whole life. I attended schools in Boynton my whole life, elementary, middle, and high school. So I know about everything you'd have to know in education, and I think it's impeccable and important. You know, the system we have is great. I think we, there's a lot of improvement we can work on, and I'm excited if I get appointed to do such a thing and to keep my promises and work hard every single day in order to do so. I also served as president of my student government association, so the whole school. So I got to work with every, you know, middle through high school student, the administration principal. So I did get a sense of direction of what we should do for our schools, charter public, everything. And I look forward to if get appointed once again. But I thank you all so much for your consideration and hard work in recent weeks. Thank you all so much, and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Ty Pesaga and everybody, the commissioner. Yeah, the reason why I'm here is.
Say your name for the record.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Roger Fournier. I live in Lantana, in the unincorporated area, just right across the street from the City of Boynton Beach. I'll get to the point. The University of Florida is proposing a, an extension in the City of West Palm Beach. They are proposing a, a $100 million to have an extension there. And I just think it would be a great idea for the City of Boynton Beach to have the extension here of the University of Florida, the, as a satellite extension, if that makes any sense. I got this information from, from Public Radio, NPR, and I just said to myself, wow, they're going to have this on Tamarind? I mean, this is like such a closed area. It's right next to the Bright Line and everything else. And I, I mean, I see the potential here to have higher education here in the City of Boynton Beach. The University of Florida in Gainesville wants to propose at least $100 million grant. Why not have it here in the City of Boynton Beach? Now, why am I interested in this? Well, I'm interested in this because I, I believe in higher education. I think it's vital for, you know, for our society today, and especially for our younger generation. So I just wanted to present this and put it on the table for you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please approach the podium now. This is the last call. If you'd like to speak, just make sure you're formal line behind the podium.
Hi, Ernest McNally, Ernest George McNally. So I have here some insect traps from my kitchen in my living room. And the City of Boynton Beach won't help me. This is so bad that the county came in and said, Mr. McNally, you have infectious mosquitoes all around your property. If you get bit by one of them, you could get very sick. I keep sending the pictures of this to the, to the city, and I don't get a response, especially from my district person, District 2. So here they are, if anybody wants to see them. This is what we have to live with. And a lot of it comes from the unregulation of feeding wild animals in Boynton Beach, which is so out of control, so out of control, that it's not just destroying my property and my home, but also the oceanfront park. The oceanfront park has rats, mice, snakes, iguanas, all, all endangered venomous animals that are being fed in the open, fed on the beach. They're feeding the pigeons, and nobody wants to enforce anything. The greatest asset of Boynton Beach is the beach. Forget all this stuff over here on Ocean Avenue and the federal. Nobody cares about that. The best, best benefit and asset of this city is the beach, Boynton Beach Oceanfront Park. It's one of the greatest beaches in the country. Okay? And it's being destroyed. No matter how many emails I send to this city to come and see what's going on there, alcohol on the beach. Today, they allow fishing. Today, an eight-year-old kid stepped on a fishing hook that they throw on the beach. They're not supposed to fish there. Now the kid's in the hospital. Today, I had to file a complaint against one of the lifeguards there. He said, ah, you, you can't document everything. We're going to get you thrown out of here. I went and made a complaint at the Ocean Ridge Police Department against, what's his name, Paul Gordon, right? Now I have the police report. So the idea is, okay, somebody has got to help us save this oceanfront park. It's being destroyed. No matter how many times I ask everyone on this dais to come there, you always have a million reasons why you can't come, right? The crime, drugs, teenagers on the beach drinking tequila, they're smoking marijuana. All right? Who's going to help us? Same person is going to help us with these deadly insects that you won't help with because feeding the wild animals all over the city. I mean, how much more can you talk here? Can you get any help? And every, all you keep doing when we come here is accolades, how great you are. Great about what? The school system? It's a failing school system. Health in this city, it's, it's failing. Danger, shootings, stabbings, drugs, gangs, and all you do is.
Thank you. Your time has expired. All right, I don't see any other public comments speakers in the chambers. We're going to proceed with those online. Monty, how many people do we have online with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, I consider.
What did he say? No hands. All right. That concludes public comments for this evening. Thank you. We're now moving on to the next section of the agenda, which is administrative. The first item is to appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. Let's pull up the list. On the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we have no applicants with one opening. We have Education and Youth Advisory Board. This, we do have one applicant. And Vice Mayor Cruz, it is your nomination for the alternate position.
All right, there's one applicant. I'll go ahead and nominate Nicholas Giacalone for the Education and Youth Advisory Board.
Is there a second? I hear a second. All those in favor of the appointment say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Congratulations. The next board is the Historical Resources Preservation Board. There are no applicants there. The Library Board also has no applicants. The next board is the Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund. Vice Mayor Cruz, once again, it is your appointment nomination.
I'll go ahead and nominate Sergeant Rachel Mochia, is it? Is that how you say it? Mochia? Okay.
Second.
Okay, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Recreation Parks Board has no applicants, and that concludes the list. The next item on the agenda is to approve a request from Commissioner Kelly to allocate her community support funds to the following: $500 to the Bill Tomé Foundation, $500 to the Boynton Beach Bulldogs, $500 to Connect to Greatness, and $1,000 to Pearls of Palm Beach, Florida. Commissioner Kelly, it's your item. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, I, I know I saw Cassandra in the audience, and I know Regina Horn was going to come also from, from Pearls of Palm Beach, and I hope that she did. My, kind of my theme for my community funds is mentorship. You know, I was a teenager who depended on my adult mentors. I didn't have a stable home environment, so I depended on my mentors, and that's something that I've carried through my life. And one of the programs that I was involved in as an adult was a program that mentored young women who had, who were teen moms. It was something that was very important to me and special to me. So not too long ago, I was, Mayor, you connected me with Connect to Greatness, and one of their parents created this program for young women, African-American young women to mentor them, and it just touched me. And so that was, I wanted to, to support, to support them and to support that mom. She is a mom of two boys, and she created this with the thought that she needed to mentor young women as well. So I know there's a couple here that, and I thought it would be great to hear from them.
I would welcome that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So if any of those organizations and the representatives would like to say a few words, please do approach the podium now. Oh, one second. Go ahead.
Good evening. Oh, there we go. Good evening, and thank you for having us. I am Dr. Cassandra Corbin Thaddeus, and I'm the president of Connect to Greatness. And I want to thank Commissioner Kelly for, yes, the donation. Appreciate the donation. But more importantly, for the time that you spent with our organization a couple of weeks ago, just kind of impromptu, impromptu, a conversation that you had with one of our sons. He asked a lot of questions at the candidate's forum, and I watched from afar you being so genuine and authentic with him and spending the time like you just, you probably could have talked to him all night, and we interrupted, and we went because we wanted to take pictures. But just really thank you for the time of seeing our sons. That's so important that they know that they matter and that they know that you all value who they are. And so I just invite each and every one of you to visit. We're at the SIM Center every Thursday, 6:00 to 7:30. We are open, you know, anytime to come in and just spend five minutes, 10 minutes, just to introduce yourselves to, to our sons. I'm going to give some of my time to all of the folks behind me as well. But just wanted to say thank you so much, Commissioner Kelly, for listening and again, seeing who we are and our boys. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Regina Horn, and I am the founder and president of Pearls of Palm Beach, Florida, which is a nonprofit organization that mentors young girls between the ages of 10 and 16 to become young leaders and influencers in their community. I am also a part of Connected to Greatness as my sons are a part of their association. And I want to thank you for this opportunity. I thank everyone here on the board for giving us this time, and we look forward to just being able to allocate those funds to further the girls and the different opportunities that they will have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Earl Bryant. I'm a retiree who's enjoying life. And part of that enjoyment is working and volunteering. I should say not working, volunteering with Connect to Greatness. And I too would like to implore you to come visit, see the young men. In some cases, they're growing old fast, so I would encourage you to come because before you know it, they'll be in your seat. So please come and see what we, what we are doing because I really think that you would truly enjoy it. Like to dito, Dr. Cassandra says, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Andre Thaddeus. I'm the executive director for Connect to Greatness. Their time does go fast. It's been seven years from the day we started when we were at the old city hall, and right now we're at this new beautiful building. We started off with six young boys in sixth grades. Now we're up to 72 total, mainly in the City of Boynton Beach from Freedom Shores Elementary up to Boynton High School. So we just want to always commend and thank you for the support that the City of Boynton has shown us for the past seven years, from our proclamation day to just the support from our commissioners, the mayor. And we just want to let you guys know we're still here. We're trying to work as many young people as we can in the City of Boynton to make them great and to be able to see things that maybe they don't see on a daily basis. So again, we would like to say thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Commissioner Kelly has put forward a motion. Is there a second for this request?
Second.
There's a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next portion of the agenda, which is consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? For myself, I would like to pull Item 6C. Are there any other requests under consent agenda? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve the remainder of consent agenda. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz. I heard a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of approving the remainder of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Item 6C reads, proposed resolution number R 23-027. Approve and authorize the city manager to sign a five-year agreement with Gellen Benefits Group, LLC for benefit consulting services with a not to exceed $90,040.70 per year. These services are not subject to the competitive solicitation requirements per Florida statute. I see our HR director is here. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioner Tenel Dacasty, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. So just to give you a background, I guess they don't have my presentation. Oh, there it is. Okay, just to give you a background, we've been with the Gellen Group since 2014. Part of their duties are to review our benefits, assist us with an employee and health wellness center or clinic, prepare and analyze and recommends regarding any savings they see for us. I'm, well, excuse me, city manager is recommending that we sign a contract with the Gellen Benefits Group. Reason being, he is very experienced from taking a city from fully insured to self-insured, which there's a lot of savings on the table, assisted with securing at least $500,000 in pharmacy rebates that we currently are not receiving now, and also implemented.
I'm sorry, HR director, could you repeat that number? I'm also going to ask IT to move the slide forward so it parallels with what she's saying. What, what number did you say?
Securing over $500,000 in pharmacy rebates that we are not receiving right now currently. He is experiencing that. And also implementing a brand-new wellness center and in the, increasing the utilization at the wellness center. Next slide. Some of his duties will, of course, growing and increasing our utilization for the wellness center, looking at our current benefits package, what we offer our employees, and also look at our long and short-term goals, what we need to do to bring our benefits up to par. And the reason for this change, if you go to the next slide, as you can see, this is our self-funding medical and dental insurance, and these are our claims. As of right now, from '21 to '22, the city, our claims were $5.3 million. We actually paid out $7.4 million, meaning we left $2 million on the table because we're not self-insured. That's one item. Why? We're, we're looking at changing consultants. Another item is our wellness clinic. Our ratio right now, return on investment is 0.8%, meaning we have about 300 employees that attend or use the wellness clinic. We pay close to $1 million for this wellness clinic. We have no return on investment. So when you look at the entire package and you look at everything for the past three years, our premiums have been going up, but our claims are at 71%. Everybody knows in the medical field, who works in the medical field on benefits, if you're 85% or lower, your premiums are great. Our premiums have been between 71% and 75% over the past three years, but our premiums went up 3% last year and 5% this year. It's not adding up. I met with our current consultant. I asked why are premiums going up? I asked why are premiums going up if our claims are at 71%? They said we had one bad year in 2019. Does not make sense. So in order to, this is the first phase, getting a new consultant on. Our second phase is changing us from fully insured to self-insured, and that's where we'll see the million-dollar savings. Our actuary for the city, GRS, actually did a feasibility study, and it clearly says if we, we should go self-funded immediately, and we would save $1 million for '23 to '24.
Alone.
Alone. That's not including the $400,000 to $600,000 rebates we will receive for being self-insured. That's not also including the wellness dollars we would receive as well. And I just want to go ahead and introduce Mr. Gellin. I want to call him up, just so you can get some of his background, if okay.
Good evening. Mayor Pensagora, Pensorga?
Pensorga.
Pensorga. Vice Mayor Cruz, Commissioner Hay, Commissioner Turkin, and Commissioner Kelly. My name is Mike Gellin with the Gellin Benefits Group, an insurance brokerage advisory and benefits consulting firm. Been in business since 2015. Prior to that, I worked as a benefits consultant for some of the world's largest global insurance brokerage firm, including Aon Consulting, Marsh McLennan, and the Lockton Benefits Group. I also serve as a current consultant for the city of Miramar, city of Lower Lakes, Broward County Superior's Elections, and have prior history working with Broward Sheriff's Office with about 5,000 employees, Broward Health with about 7,000 employees, and Broward County Government, a small project. So there's a lot of opportunities for savings among your current program. Tenille spoke about your loss ratio. When Obamacare was passed, they had a mandate that said, as long as the insurance company has a loss ratio of 85% or lower, they're doing well. You have a 71% loss ratio, and it's been in the 70s the last couple of years. Because you're fully insured, you pay the insurance company a set dollar. So they're saying they expect to spend $7 million in total expenses. Well, instead, you paid $5 million. And so you don't get to keep that gap, they get to keep that gap. If you were self-insured, you would spend the $5 million on claims, maybe another half a million to a million on administrative expenses, and then you would keep that difference. So you would achieve that savings. So you can achieve savings in your medical insurance program, in your dental insurance program, and then we can increase utilization in the wellness center. The purpose of having a wellness center is to make sure that all your employees know their numbers, get their annual physical each year, know what their conditions are, and address those conditions through the health center. Additionally, we can negotiate securing wellness dollars from the insurance company anywhere between $100,000 and $150,000, and you can use those dollars as incentives to get employees to use, to use the wellness center or get their annual physical. So there are plenty of ways that you can improve your program, including have an additional option. You have one option for your health insurance program, and it's your high deductible health plan. And that, that plan is not attractive to a lot of people, because it's a first-dollar...
Is that what we have currently, the high deductible?
It's your only option. Most cities throughout all of South Flor- Florida have two or three options. You have a diverse set of employees, young people, older people, family, no families. So you need to have multiple options, so employees can pick the option that best suits them.
Thank you. I have so many questions, and I really hope that the public, those in the room and those that are going to listen to this recording in the future, are listening very carefully, because what we're hearing is staggering, the amount of shameful and wasteful spending that has been going on for way too long. Thank you for bringing up that slide. Tenille, in just this year alone, what we're looking at, how much money did we lose in that year?
We lost $2 million in '21, '22, over three, sorry.
And for how long have we been losing money?
About three years now. So total, if we take into consideration admin costs and stop-loss insurance, we lost a total of $2.7 million over three years.
Tenille, help me understand why this would be allowed to go on for so long? What would be the benefit of our current system with a high deductible, which is obviously hurting all of our employees, versus going self-insured? Why would we, or not we, but why would the previous administration and previous decision-makers continue with this system that's been going on for so long? We've, we're losing money, we're not getting some funds that we could have had that could have gone down to our employees, and they could have had more options.
Correct.
Better benefits.
Mayor, I don't know why they didn't, obviously, they didn't have the best interest in our citizens that we serve, and they didn't have the best interest of our employees. All I can say is, me coming in and based on the discussion I had with our city manager, he gave me what, what I need to do to turn this around, because we're losing employees because of our health insurance. And the city man...
Thank you, city manager.
And the city manager had, you know, a heartfelt conversation with me and gave me an example that we had a police officer who had a baby, and because the expense of having a child to start a family, she couldn't afford to pay the bill, and it went on her credit. And I had another conversation with a detective today, and she advised me it cost her $7,500 to have a baby, but a Palm Beach sheriff officer, her friend, had a baby and it cost her $1,500. And this is because we only have one option.
Tenille, I have one, everyone has lots of questions. Let me just ask one more. I, I'm just trying to understand how this has persisted for so long. This information, is this something that you had to put together? Is this something that's buried? Or is this something that anyone would, anyone in administrative, not anyone, but the responsible parties, the HR department, the city management, would this be something that would be information they would see on a regular basis?
Absolutely. We have a quarterly meeting with our benefits consultant and our medical vendor, which is United Health, and we go over the claims, medical, dental, everything. And we look at the numbers. When I had my first meeting with the Gellin Group and United Health, and it was in January, and I looked, and I'm like, our, our claims are amazing. Why are we paying so much money? Because honestly, the city is actually taking, absorbing that cost, so our employees don't hurt. So it's, it's hurting the city, it's hurting our employees. I don't know why this wasn't talked about years ago, but it's plain, it's in black and white. They have a meeting with us every quarter, where we're at, where we need to go. Unfortunately, whoever negotiated the contract, they didn't have performance measures in there.
No performance measures.
Correct. So when, when Mr. Gellin sent me his proposal, I said, I need performance measures. If you don't meet here, we're taking off your pay, because we need to meet a higher standard. Same thing with our wellness center. We do not have performance measures in our wellness center either, which that's, it's common sense that you need to have performance measures, because you need to set a goal for them, we have to reach that goal, and if you can't, we have to look elsewhere.
What is the ROI on, excuse me, let's begin with, what is the percent utilization of the wellness center?
It's zero, okay, it's about 20% or less. The return on investment is 0.8%, so we're losing money right now, because we're underutilized.
I'll end my line of questioning for now. As you can see, I'm extremely upset by this. This is not a small amount of money, folks, and it's not a one-time situation. This is shameful. Let's begin with Commissioner Hay.
I'm just in shock to hear this. Other cities around Boynton Beach, do you have any feel for...
Yes. I used to be the city Director of HR for the city of Delray Beach. We had a wellness center. We also were self-insured, and we also offered options to our employees. Utilization is about 50% for the city of Delray Beach, approximately. So yes, majority of the cities, the previous city I worked for, the city of Miramar, fully insured, they looked at the numbers, went self-insured, opened a clinic, and their utilization is amazing. And they're getting rebates between $400,000 and $600,000.
Wow. I'm just so shocked that, I don't even know what to ask, but we are blessed to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking into this.
Thank you.
This is, this is just shocking. I, I find it hard to believe that, that, what incentive, how does that work in other cities where you need to have employees go through the wellness center, you know, and do what they're supposed to do to keep that, that bar up health-wise?
Right.
Where it should be in order to reap the benefits? How is that working? And other...
There's different incentives. You have the wellness dollars that Mr. Gellin spoke about, that you can incentivize your employees to go get your biometrics done. I know at the city of Miramar and city of Delray Beach, if you went and did your biometrics at the wellness center, you would get a discount off your premiums. So it's so many incentives that, that are out there that could have been offered to the employees to, first of all, get their health better, because you know, when your employees are sick or struggling with a disease, you know, that you call out sick, or whatever the case may be, a vacation, and then we have to backfill with overtime. So not only are we saving because we're self-insured and better costs for benefits, you're saving on the overtime as well. So once we know, once we go in, once we change from fully insured to self-insured, we're going to focus on those who have hypertension. Then we, we advise, okay, the vendor and the wellness center, you need to contact this employee, make sure he's taking his medicine, make sure he's doing his annual, and that saves the employee's health, number one, and number two, saves us on overtime for calling out sick.
Unbelievable. Tenille, this, to me, this is a no-brainer. What's the next phase after this committee rules, one way or the other?
So the next phase is, Mr. Gellin and I, if you guys approve us going with Mr. Gellin, we would get together, we're going to do a RFP on benefits, different benefits out there, like Florida Blue, Edna, Cigna, look at United Health as well, because they are a current carrier. We're going to keep the high deductible option, because at the city of Miramar, which has about 1,200 employees, we had 137 employees approximately that kept the high deductible. So we want to keep that option for those who are healthy, we want to keep that option, and then offer other options. And at the same time, we're going to change from fully insured to self-insured. When you're self-insured, you have control of the plan design, you see the claims, you make the decision, and, and you save money.
You go, Director.
Thank you.
That's what I have right now.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Not going to say much. I think a lot has already been discussed, but thank you so much.
You're welcome.
From the bottom of my heart, for, for doing a good job, for caring about the city, for coming in and making changes immediately. It talks a lot about your character, it talks a lot about your work ethic. So thank you, and thank you to the city manager as well for having those hard-to-hard conversations, because, you know, if we didn't have those conversations, we probably wouldn't be in this moment right now. So thank you for being proactive, thinking about how to serve our employees better, and emphasizing and understanding how maybe a single person gets married and has kids, and all of a sudden, their insurance situation is different, and all of a sudden, the job that was adequate for them, maybe at that point, is not so the case anymore because of their insurance premium and their costs. So I really appreciate you providing different options for different stages of life of our employees and making sure that we keep people here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Turkin.
Tenille, how long have you been here?
March 19th will be 90 days.
Right before your performance review.
You hear that, CM?
My, my, my.
Thank you for doing this, city manager. Thank you. I share the same sentiment with my colleagues. I think if anything, we should look into a little bit more, dig a little deeper in reference to our finances. You know, I think there's, you know, I think there's things that we should look into. I know we do an annual audit as well. But I mean, if this is something we're catching now, and it's been, did you say three years?
Yeah, three, 2019, right.
I would, I would be curious to see what else and what, what else we could have a cost savings for, but what other bad contracts we have in the city? And so, you know, I, I challenge staff to look into that, because, you know, we have new leadership here, and, you know, sometimes you gotta, you know, clean up, clean up a little bit of a mess. And, you know, I just, I just want to challenge that, because I think if we have Tenille here, and within 90 days, she's already identified and analyzed $2 million of wasteful spending, is that what we, or 1 million?
2.7.
2.7. I can only imagine what else we have. So those are my comments. I support this, and I'd like to move forward.
I have a few comments. Let's, let's finish with Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Tenille. As a person who tried to utilize the city health plan at one point in my life to ensure myself and my children, we had to opt to Florida Kid Care. And this is something that I have, since I have sat in this chair, that I have implored city staff to, to look into more affordable healthcare for our employees. Our employees should not, they should have options. If that's their option, and that's what they choose, that they should have the option. So I'm, I, this is something that has a long time coming, and I'm glad to see it happening. I do have some questions as a mom and somebody who utilizes a lot of health insurance. So I just have some questions. Is this going to, something that we use often, so that's why I'm asking, is there going to be an HSA still intact within this health plan?
Yes, with the high deductible, yes, there will be.
Just with the high deductible?
Correct. Am I right, Mike?
Yes.
Other plan, okay. We can spin on other plans, but yes, with the high deductible, yes. We are going to keep that.
Okay. I'll stay on topic as far as this, and then I'll ask you one last question. Do you know, or do you have an estimate of what the cost, and this is before we've given all, because we've, we did a lot since April, since I joined the commission in helping employees with their health benefits financially. We reduced it at a cost of the city. Do you have an estimate of what the difference will be for a family, for a family plan on what we have now? And maybe you don't right now, based on, because we don't, we're pricing it out.
Right, we, we have to price it out.
Okay.
Once I have it, I'll, I'll send it to each of you.
Okay. What is your plan to promote better usage of the clinic?
Incentives, wellness dollars, gift cards, discounts on your premiums. We have to do a huge campaign. We can't just send out an email. It has to go, we, so HR, in my opinion, we're not behind the scenes, we're supposed to be in the departments. So we have to do a huge campaign, go to public works, go to utilities, who, those who don't have emails, hang out flyers everywhere, maybe have a re-grand opening or something that brings or attracts the employees to the wellness center. But the biggest thing is incentives. I can't fail at this, because if I fail, the city manager fails, and our employees are going to suffer. So I'm telling you that we're going to turn this around.
That's great. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And, and the city clinic is, has a laundry list of services. They are, you don't just have to be sick.
Right.
It's wellness, it's mental health, it's across the board. And so I'm, I'm excited to see it get utilized. I know that there are some employees that use it and they depend on it, but it's, it's underused, as you know. Were we, as part of, so the numbers, and this is my last question, I just want to make sure I am, were there admin fees on top of these premiums, or are the admin fees part of the, like, is this truly...
This is the true number.
Okay.
Yes.
So this includes the admin fees and everything. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. City manager, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I'm just, I'll start off by saying, thank you to, to Tenille and Mike. Mike, I had the pleasure of sitting down with you. I thought you were such an articulate person and definitely a professional, professional of your craft, so I appreciate you coming here tonight and sharing that. Obviously, I've, I've been in the city for almost two decades. I remember when the high deductible savings plan went into effect. The idea was our claims were too high, and they wanted to, I guess, somehow get those, those claims down. But with that, people, the, the employees, literally the backbone of the city, they became, they became scared to even go to the doctor, because a lot of times, and we're not even talking about out-of-network usage, which can ramp your costs up thousands upon thousands of dollars. So I know, Andrew, you've probably heard this, like, I do everything in this city to make sure that those tax, taxpayer dollars aren't being wasted from a ROI standpoint. So what are we getting in return for our money? And I know, Mayor, you touched on it briefly. You said, how could this go on? The only way I can think that this could have went on for so long is through either apathy or negligence. There is no other way it could have gone on. Obviously, with exit interviews, I hear multiple times, and I know Chief DeJulio, he's worked in the fire department, Hugh, I'm sure he's heard it also. The number one reason I get over and over and over again, and Commissioner Kelly's shaking her head, is our insurance, our insurance, our insurance. It's a recruitment tool. our insurance, our insurance, our insurance, it's a recruitment tool and a retention tool. And everyone here knows health insurance is such a pain these days because these premiums, and, and you see the stock prices on some of these companies are skyrocketing. Yeah, our premium, or our claims continue to stay below 85%. So our premiums going up, someone's getting the money and obviously it's not the city, so. This is just basically me putting the employees first, you guys put me in the seat for a reason. I'm going to continue to work hard and hopefully continue to bring in and cultivate talent like Tenille. So you're an amazing woman.
Thank you, sir.
I, I really appreciate everything you're doing. Now, one topic that I know Tenille didn't touch on, but how many wellness dollars are we getting right now?
Okay, so they only gave us $50,000, which is ridiculous for the size of this city. So I had to ask, can we have some more money, please? So they only gave us additional $20,000. So a total of $70,000. We should be at 100, between 100 and 150,000. I asked, why are we only getting that little? The City of Delray Beach received, I think, 250. What is Miramar receiving? 150, we're about the same size. They said, well, it just depends on your budget, but I don't, I don't agree with that.
So I'm looking at it from a standpoint, once we get those wellness dollars put in place, we go from a, from a sickness, wellness, fitness, basically, I want my employees fit for duty. I want them to come in, I want them to be happy to come into work. I don't want them to put on a face, like a fake face, a shield when you come in. I want them to know that they can trust our leadership, that we're not, we don't have an ivory tower complex. I want my people to feel happy, I want to feel like they're going to actually be appreciated, so. And obviously, with that being said, I'm going to hire a wellness coordinator for the city. So they're going to take a look at, this individual will take a look at the nutritional needs of the employees. We're going to have a fitness facility here in City Hall eventually, just like our Public Safety has. So we're going, obviously, we're going to have the clinic for mental health, wellness, nutrition, things like that. And we'll also have a wellness coordinator paid for with.
Wellness dollars.
So, yeah, with that, I'll just say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tenille, before you go, because some things, I, I heard everything, but not everything is adding up for me. Something is not quite right, because you, you told us that this is information that's not hidden, quite regularly reviewed. When you, did you ask the Garen Group why this has been our setup for quite, for quite some time?
Yes, I did.
I mean, are they aware of the savings that we could have had?
When I asked for a feasibility study from them, it showed the 2.7 million dollars, so they were very, they were aware. They advised me it was 2.7 million.
And when you asked them why we had this setup, what did they say back to you?
They blamed the previous administration.
Were they instructed not to go self insured and save millions of dollars?
Yes, they were. They brought it to the table and the, the previous administration said no.
That is very troubling, deeply troubling.
Makes no sense to me.
That's my, that's my point, Commissioner, it makes no sense.
It doesn't make sense to have a wellness center when you're fully insured. When you're self insured, that's when you open a wellness center.
It doesn't add up.
Okay, let's move ahead.
Thank you again, Tenille, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
Motion to approve.
Excellent.
Proposed Resolution Number R23-027.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you and congratulations. We're now moving on to the one item under consent bids and purchases over $100,000. This is 7A, approval to issue a purchase order for the rental of a 1 kilowatt emergency backup generator and cables at the East Water Treatment Plant. We have a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
There's a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. That concludes all of consent items, we are now moving on to public hearing. As we enter into public hearing, we will address all six items, 8A through F in one hearing. After that process, we will return to each item for individual voting. I'm going to turn now to our city attorney to read the ordinances into the record as where, as well as swear in the relevant parties.
Mr. Members, this is to the commission, before I start, I just want to remind everybody, this is a quasi judicial hearing. You do have two ordinances as well as, I'm going, you have an ordinance to rezone the property of a sec, and that's second reading, a second reading to approve an abandonment of certain rights of way and roadways. You've got approval variance, approval of new master plan, approval of a request for four community design appeals, and approval request for height exception. Under standard quasi judicial procedures, you will hear from the applicant first and you'll hear from the city. In this particular case, we did get a notice of appearance from an interested party. Our code provides for them the ability to participate. That is the owner of the property at 209 North Federal Highway. Miss, Miss K, you may recall spoke at the first hearing and they are represented by counsel this evening and will have a opportunity to talk after the city presents. And then you'll turn it over to public hearing. The public can speak on the application, then you'll go to, back to the city and then back to the applicant. So in this step, you haven't had one since I've been here, we have an interested party exercise their rights under our code, and they did in this instance, and they will be able to participate in the hearing. At this time, I'll read both ordinances titles into the record and then I swear everybody in who intends to give testimony this evening. Item 8A is an ordinance 23005, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as the Pierce from CBD, Central Business District to MUC, Mixed Use Core, provided for complex survivability and effective date. And second ordinance, excuse me, hit the microphone there, is ordinance number 23006. It's slightly longer title, in ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the abandonment of the 225 foot long segment of the 20 foot wide right of way located within the northern section of the proposed, the Pierce Development, approximately 175 feet south of the last Boynton Beach Boulevard center line, I'm sorry, of the East Boynton Beach Boulevard Center Line, AKA North Alley, the 225 foot long segment of the 40 foot wide Northeast First Avenue right of way, and the 335.02 foot long segment of the 20 foot right of way located within the southern section of the proposed, the Pierce Development, approximately 150 feet north of the East Ocean Avenue Center Line, AKA South Alley. Authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded within this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing for an effective date. And for the record, before I do swear everybody in, I want to note that the testimony records that were developed before the Planning and Development Board, as well as the first hearing you had on this back in February 21st, as well as the staff reports and the PowerPoints, they're all part of the record. So at this point, what I like to do is swear on anybody who intends to give testimony. This includes members of the public who wants their statements to be taken as sworn evidence, to just raise your right hand and I swear you in. Do you swear affirm the statements or testimony you give this evening, should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And I would ask if you do, if you were sworn in, just please indicate that when you do speak to the commission. At this time, I think it would be appropriate to hear from the applicant, who again is, unless the applicant objects, which my understanding is they do not, we're going to call all these items together for a single hearing and it will return to the commission for votes.
That's right. Thank you so much, city attorney. Will the applicant please approach the podium and you may begin with your presentation?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Burns, I'm the CEO of Affiliate Development, Mayor City Commission. Want to thank you for having us here. We're becoming quite familiar with commission chambers, having spent a great deal of time here over the last two and a half years working on this, this project.
You were sworn, correct?
I am sworn, yes. So this is going to be our second reading, many of you have seen this multiple times, so we're going to try to buzz through it relatively quickly here. But, you know, one of the things that I, I couldn't help but, but pick up on in some, some of the previous conversations earlier tonight was, you know, the fact that Boynton Beach is on the map and this city is moving forward and it's moving in the right direction. And I can tell you, from having worked here for the last two and a half years, I can certainly say that we've witnessed that and that we're extremely excited to be making this kind of investment into your city. We've met with the businesses, the residences, or the residents, and many of, of the community stakeholders. And, and we really do believe in this city and the, and the direction that it's headed. One of the questions that we get asked often is, what, what are next steps after tonight? So next steps are, we, we finish up our drawings, get going with our, our building permit, and put a construction budget together, hire a general contractor, and get going. And so we're extremely excited to be moving towards this next phase of, of this whole process. So with that being said, I can take you through the presentation. Many of you know the location, being Boynton Beach Boulevard, Ocean Avenue, Fourth and Federal Highway. Excite, please? Executive summary, we're talking about 300 unit department building or 17,000 square feet of commercial space, a parking garage with 150 spaces dedicated to the public. Excite, please? So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my architect, let him present. Hopefully we get the video and the sound, the work on, on this go around here and then he'll take you through the rest of the design and, and I'll finish it up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Elliot Young, Senior Vice President, Architect and Project Manager with Rinca, the architecture firm that designed this project. I'd like to start with the animation, then go through some plans, explain the site configuration again, but I'm going to keep it relatively concise, as you're all very familiar with the project, I believe at this point. We'll take any questions after that, we can go back to any slides and focus on specific items. So we can go ahead and play the MP4, please.
Did we do a run through? Yes, okay, good. And I was.
And the ordinances and, and applications before you tonight, as well as the still imagery renderings of the project. So this is the site plan, as Jeff said, federal highway is to the east, which is page south. Boynton Beach Boulevard is the north on the right hand side. On Boynton Beach and Fourth Street, which is to the west, we have the new Hurricane Alley Restaurant with, it's a two-story restaurant with some outdoor seating adjoining a public kind of parklit area you saw in the animation where there could be, you know, movie nights or community events held there, overflow space for Hurricane Alley, but a nice little pocket park along Fourth Street. The parking structure situated off of Fourth with one entrance on Fourth Street and the other entrance is at the roundabout drop-off area, Port Cocheer, right in the center of the plan, where the termination of First Street would be. That's also the main entrance for the multifamily building with amenity spaces on the first floor. There's also three additional retail spaces in the multifamily building on level one. To the north, or sorry, to the west on Fourth Street, there's a linear retail space that could be, we're envisioning potentially a retailer, like a clothing store, or some kind of merchandise type of retail establishment. There's a, what we're calling Dewey Park Cafe, which is directly adjacent to existing Dewey Park off of Ocean Avenue. There's a freestanding second restaurant, two-story restaurant, fronting Ocean Avenue. We're envisioning that to be, you know, very busy, large restaurant with a rooftop deck on the second floor. We have the pool area kind of centered in the courtyard space within the development for the residents. That's a secured area for resident only access. And a final retail space to the east on Federal Highway that we're envisioning as maybe a creative office type of active use there. So various retail establishments that are open during different times of the day, you know, a lot of activity intended for this site and a lot of amenities, public and private, for the residents, for the 300 units that are proposed. We also have, the color boxes on the plan are apartment units with walk-ups, front porches, lining federal, First Street, as well as some on Dewey Park in the interior courtyard. And we can go to the next slide. So landscape buffer variance, which I'm pretty sure everybody's very familiar with, this was approved, recommended approval at the PND in November. Next slide. So the applications before you are listed here, next slide. So one of them is the rezoning of CBD to Mixed Use Core. The application meets all the criteria that's listed in the, in the LDRs, next slide. The master plan and major site plan also meet all the criteria listed in the, in the application. Next slide, please. And a new master plan and major site plan complies with the location and general use requirements applicable to the Mixed Use Core District. Next slide. So there's three abandonments, again, which we're all familiar with. The North Alley, which would be between the parking structure, proposed parking structure and Hurricane Alley, a portion of Northeast First Avenue to create that Port Cocheer drop-off area and the South Alley that goes through the existing block behind the existing Hurricane Alley, adjacent to Dewey Park. Next slide. So there's four community design appeals involved with this project, one for each facade of the parking structure. So I can run through really quickly what each facade and, and the architectural and landscape features on each side of the building, next slide. So on the north garage elevation, this would be facing the new Hurricane Alley building. We, the entire design of the parking structure is intended to look very similar to the multifamily building. So really has an integrated architectural appearance. There's punched openings that have framing elements that mimic the multifamily building. You see some staggering in the, in the height of these openings, that's to intend to completely conceal any ramping or visible vehicles within the parking structure, really make it look like an occupied building. Introduce some different stucco treatments with striations and different textures to, to add interest to those facades. And on almost all four sides of the parking structure, we've worked with our landscape architect to integrate heavy landscaping. So you can see palm trees on this elevation and the others that are shown at time of planting and then time at final maturity. So these get pretty tall and I think, you know, with their placing really, you know, provides a uniformity to the exterior, as well as hedging at the base, as well as some green wall elements at the base in key areas. On this facade, we also have space allocated for this large projection area, like I said, for, you know, Dolphins games or movie nights, things like that. Next slide. This is the south elevation, in the middle of the page is where the multifamily building is, is connecting to the parking garage on every floor. So on the right hand side. So on the right-hand side, there's the entrance off of the drop-off area. On the far right, that darker stucco treatment is intended to mimic what's happening on the multifamily building at the corners. We're introducing a darker tone. That's also a location to put the Pierce signage for the development. Also public parking identification, as there will be public parking in the structure. On the left-hand side of the garage in this elevation, this is really at the loading and trash area that's internalized into a courtyard we, we've carved out. So there's still window openings for naturally ventilating the parking structure, similar to the multifamily building. But most of what's happening on the ground level is, is back of house behind secured gates. You start to see on the left-hand side, which is wrapping around to Fourth Street, perforated metal screen element. This is part of the Arts in Public Places requirements. So I mentioned this in the last meeting, but the intent of the imagery here, and you can go to the next slide. We can see that screen better. Or sorry, this is the facade facing Federal Highway. Again, heavy landscaping, we've done some planter boxes with bougainvillea vines to grow down the building. And you can see that Pierce signage element on the left-hand side on the corner, the drop-off. Last slide. So this is on Fourth Street. So that screen element is intended to be, you know, signifier that you're in Boynton Beach. We talked about as bright line trains pass on the tracks directly across the street, knowing where you are. So we've kind of, we've shown a concept, but this will be RFP'd out to an artist to come up with the final design. But we're thinking something, you know, a little more retro, like postcard, like you've arrived in Boynton Beach type of thing. At the base of that sign is intended to be a public bike share station and a mural with, you know, a city map with bicycles, something like that to add interest at the ground level. There's also some, some vines growing up, some lattices adjacent to the second entrance off of Fourth. And again, the, the window treatments mimicking what's on the multifamily building. Next slide. So this meets criteria of, of Chapter Two for the Design Appeals. Next slide. So the height exception for the parking garage, in order to have the garage meet code required egress, we do have one stair core that needs to go two feet 11 inches above the maximum height. It's only about a 10-foot by 20-foot deep section of the building. It's integrated into the entire structure and barely noticeable. But that does need a height exception in this part of this application. Next slide. So this is an aerial view looking over the railroad tracks at the building. So Dewey Park's in the foreground. If you can just get an idea of the, of the shape and size of the building. Again, what we've done is, you know, tried to not build a super block and tried to carve out these really interesting and unique courtyards and experiences for the public. This site is, you know, a four-sided site, we like to call it, where pedestrian activity is going to occur on all sides of the building. So internalizing all of those necessary evils like trash removal, move-ins, you know, loading docks was a big, major effort. And I think we executed that well by keeping that off of the street in, on every facade. And pulling the building back allows us to fit in the pool areas, the amenities, the drop-off and add interest as well as lining a lot of retail along the base of the building. Excellent. So this is a rendering on Federal Highway looking west. I forgot to mention in the site plan, but at that corner of Federal Highway and Ocean is intended to be also a public art installation. If you remember across the street, there's a much larger sculpture currently there. We do something similar on, on this corner. You know, some kind of maritime-themed educational installation that's, you know, good for kids to, to learn about, you know, marine life and things like that. Also something that would be designed by an artist through the RFP process. Next slide. Just an idea of what a night rendering might look like for the building. Next slide. This is looking at the Port Cochea, looking up First Street to the drop-off area. Next slide. Another view of that entry drop-off area. And we, again, with the parking structure on the right, the multifamily building on the left, we're trying to tie in the architecture together with the signage element actually turning into the canopy at the drop-off, providing shade at the main entrance. Next slide. This is a view directly above the railroad tracks. So at the base of the building on Fourth, that's that linear retail space, parking structure on the left and Dewey Park on the right. Next slide. Looking straight on at that retail space and you can just start to see where we've kind of tucked all the loading and trash removal areas behind the building in that carved-out courtyard area. Next slide. A close-up of the, the screen element. So like I said, it's a perforated steel screen that uses different perforation sizes to actually get the imagery. It's really interesting product. There are several companies that do this. And we've been working with several to, to make sure we can achieve something that it looks, looks like we're representing it in these renderings. Next slide. This is a close-up view of the corner of Boynton Beach and Fourth of the new Hurricane Alley Restaurant. Next slide. And that courtyard with the resident outdoor amenities. And Jeff will talk about all the amenities in a second here. Next slide.
Yes, so, you know, one of the things that, you know, we've brought up previously is, is when, we don't just create places to live, we create an experience. So when people live here, especially these days, people want all the amenities that come along with living in a building, a Class A building such as this. So we have more amenities, I'm not going to list them all than most hotels, most luxury hotels around here. This truly will be an experience for our residents. One of the most important things to add is that 50%, 150 units of this building will be offered to individuals and families that fall within the workforce housing category. And that's pursuant to our agreements, which we have signed with you. I applaud you for doing this. One of the things that is becoming more and more prevalent in this county is, is the affordability issue. And it's not about offering a substandard product. It's about offering the luxury Class A beautiful experience, but giving people a fair shake on rent. So, you know, 60%, over 60% of the people in Palm Beach County are cost burdened that, that rent unit. So this is going to be for everybody and that's what it's intended for. And that's what cities are all about. So in fact, we're finishing another project up in West Palm, currently a public-private partnership, 309-unit project downtown West Palm Beach. That project also has mixed income and, and we're delivering it here in two months. Hope that we can send an invite to have everybody come up and see, see the finished product firsthand. We're awfully proud about what we do. With that, next slide, please. So we talked about art in public places. Elliot did a good job covering it, marine-themed. We want it to be interactive. That's something important to us. When people walk in, you know, you know, from east, further east, some of the restaurants and everything, to be able to learn about what's in the ocean just a few blocks away. And so that's the intention of this and we will be working with artists to make sure that we implement this properly. Next slide, please. That is it. With that, I'm certainly happy to answer questions or we can move.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. What I'd like to do before we entertain questions from my colleagues is let's just hear from everybody first and then we'll have plenty of time for questions. So next up would be city staff, followed by the interested party.
Yeah, the, the attorney and the party, which is 209 North Federal.
All right.
Good evening, Amanda Radigan, Planning and Zoning Director. Thank you, Manny. Can you go to the next slide, please?
And you were sworn, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So staff does have a couple of comments regarding the conditions of approval for this project. The first is an amendment to condition of approval number four. Without reading all that text, the primary difference between what was and what we are recommending is that this is giving options for different variations of the undergrounding of utilities. This allows if they are unable to underground based on things that are not solely within their discretion, such as things that may come up with FPNL ownership issues, there is other options for them to accomplish the same thing, such as a pay-in lieu of fee. So they will be responsible for location to underground and the fee, the cost for the undergrounding, if they cannot underground wholly on themselves. Next slide. This next amendment is to comment number nine. This is primarily just an expansion of the original comments. It allows for more direction on what easements are expected. Next slide. There are three comments. I'm having a hard time reading those, I think, condition number six, 15 and 40. Those four conditions, thank you. Those four conditions we are putting in within the rejected means they can be stricken from the conditions of approval. They are essentially have been resolved already or are duplicative. Next slide. And this last comment came up in our last hearing. This was the revision from provide consent from neighbors to continue working with adjacent neighbors in regards to the abandonment request. That's all I have, but I'm available for any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you. And again, I'm going to ask that we hold the questions until we've heard from all parties. So we'll ask them all at one time. The next up, next speaker.
Good evening. Aaron Williams from Greenspoon Martyr on behalf of 209 North Federal. And just before I start, and I wanted to thank you for allowing us to speak at this meeting tonight on behalf of my client. I wanted to introduce a couple of letters into the record. And I have copies for the commission as well and Mr. Sorrell. And I don't know if you want me to, I have a few more items as well that I'm going to seek into the record. Seeing that you walked around, maybe I'll just give it all to you now.
Other two there? You happen to have a copy for the applicant as well in the city?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, those are maybe for the clerks.
All right. So we received the letter. Is there any other, I see more documents are coming.
Yes, seeing how he had to walk all the way around, I was going to do it one by one during my presentation, but I'll do it all now.
No, best to do it now.
Oh. These letters and these pictures will be part of the record.
All right, so I have a letter, I have a map packet. Pretty part of the record, but I'm just going to hand it out just to make it easy. Was there more?
Offer them during my presentation. Thank you so much.
Looks like there might be more.
Thank you. And again, there are copies being provided to the applicant as well.
They're all right here, I'll hand them to them. Some of these items may already be in the record otherwise, but for ease of the presentation. Put it here.
Oh no, those are, yeah, those are the extra ones.
Yep, thank you. Okay, if everyone has everything, I'll go ahead and commence if it pleases the commission.
Please.
Thank you so much. So as I stated, my name is Aaron Williams and I'm here on behalf of the property owner at 209 North Federal. Now, we've obviously known about this project in the past, but what we've learned recently and was different than when this project was originally presented to the board and.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams, just one moment. I just want to make sure we're absolutely clear. I was informed that you understand that you have about 12 minutes or so.
I do, yes.
Okay, making sure that you're aware.
Yes, and I, and I appreciate, I know the applicant went beyond that, but we appreciate the time that you're providing to us. And as I was stating, when this project was initially presented to the board in 2021, it was not presented with an abandonment of that road. And in fact, when the project was granted to affiliated, it was going to have a bridge over Northeast First Avenue. That was presented, that was discussed. And in fact, in the renderings, there we, I have now handed them up there. In the renderings that they even presented at that time, it showed the bridge over the property. In their presentation materials, it stated that they were going to seek a request to Engineering Utility and zoning divisions for the following, a bridge over Northeast First Avenue. That was what was presented. I even have here the minutes from the November 30th, 2021 hearing in front of the Special Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting, where the chairman Grant, even at that time, asked about the ingress and egress for the parking garage. And what he was told was that there would be an entrance to the parking garage on First Avenue and Fourth. And it was also shown these materials that discuss the bridge going over Northeast First Avenue. Well, that's not what affiliated is coming here today and asking for approval. And in fact, and I believe I heard Mr. Burns say this just a few minutes ago, they are going to have more changes perhaps to their drawings as we move forward. Well, what else is going to change? What initially was presented was a bridge over Northeast First Avenue and not an abandonment of that road. Now they're seeking an abandonment. What's next? So before I get into further argument here in my presentation, I'd like to have our traffic engineer who we've discussed and frankly is the only traffic engineer who is going to be presenting anything on the abandonment in this case, as there has been no traffic engineer put forth by the applicant at all related to this abandonment. So if you could, sir, could you please tell us your name?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners Joaquin Vargas with Traffic Engineering, and I have been sworn in.
And Mr. Vargas, how many years you've been working as a transportation engineer? And is the copy of your CV that I've already handed to the commissioner current copy?
35 years. I'm sorry, I did not see the document you provided to them.
Certainly.
They're bringing in.
This is my, my current resume.
And in your 35 years of experience, is a proposed abandonment usually accompanied with a traffic study?
Yes. Road abandonment are not very common, but there is a detailed traffic study that is conducted for that. I know of only one case that I was involved, that there was no need for a traffic study. It was a roadway in Fort Lauderdale, I believe it was Eighth Street, because it was fenced off for over 10 years. So the traffic impacts of that were already occurring. So there was no need to do a traffic study in that particular case.
And are you aware if there was one done here for this proposed abandonment for a portion of Northeast First Avenue?
I have not seen any traffic study for that purpose.
Are you aware that the property located at 209 North Federal Highway has been considered for the development of a hotel with 125 rooms?
That's my understanding.
And that's in the materials that has already been handed up? If that was made, I'm sorry, if the hotel was made with that, in, on that property, would it have an impact on the traffic on the surrounding area?
It certainly would add traffic to the surrounding roadways. And if there is an abandonment of First Avenue, then yes, that would cause some, some traffic concerns for the area.
Now, have you been able to review and make conclusions from any traffic studies for this area?
Yes, I have looked at the current road network and also with the abandonment. I've looked at the effects of that from an access point of view.
And what traffic study did a review to aid you in this?
There was a study that was provided to me prepared by Kimley Horn for the Ocean One project. And the last revision of that report was dated January 26, 2017. It did detailed traffic counts in the area, including US One and Boynton Beach Boulevard and also US One and Avenue, Ocean Avenue. So I've looked at that in detail for my purpose of the evaluation.
And I'll represent to the commission, that's the traffic analysis that was handed up as part of the record. What conclusions were you able to make as to how traffic will change and affect the property located at 209 North Federal Highway in the event the proposed abandonment is approved?
Well, I, I have a series of figures. I'm not sure if you provided that to the.
Yes, I did.
You didn't, so I'd like to go over those figures. Figure one shows a current traffic concerned areas. And this is all based on that traffic study that was prepared by Kimley Horn. There's, there's three areas of concern. One is eastbound on Boynton Beach Boulevard when you get to Federal Highway. The backup, traffic backs up significantly towards the railroad track. Again, that is based on the information of that traffic study. And then the last two items, some of you may be aware of that since you travel the area. Going north on Federal Highway to. Going north on Federal Highway to turn left on Boynton Beach Boulevard, there's two left turn lanes. Traffic queues are projected to back up significantly on that turn lane. And the same thing on the southbound to east, southbound Federal Highway to eastbound Ocean Avenue, there's a single left turn lane. That backup is also a projected to occur at that location. And those two turn lanes cannot be lengthened any further because they're back to back turn lanes. What I mean by that is that if you lengthen one, you have to reduce the other one and vice versa. So they are maxed out today and they cannot be lengthened any further. If you look at figure two, figure two shows the, the current access options to go to parcel two oh nine. We have five ways that we can get in there. Of those five ways, two will encounter with those congested areas that I described according to the Kimley Horn Report. And three options of the five will experience no traffic congestion or backup. That is with the current road network. If you look at figure three, with the abandonment, we go from five options to get to that parcel to only three options. So that's two options are eliminated. And of those three options, there's only one that will not encounter traffic backups. The other two will encounter traffic backups as documented in the Kimley Horn Report. That is going to the site. Figure four and five document the options to leave parcel two oh nine. Figure four shows with the current road network without the abandonment. Again, we have five options to get out. And of those five options, three will encounter those traffic congestions and two will not encounter any traffic congestion or backup. And similarly, if we do have the abandonment, we'll go from five options to leave a parcel to only three, out of which two will encounter traffic problems and one will not encounter traffic problems. So with the abandonment, there's a significant impact to that parcel from an access point of view to get to the parcel and also to leave from the parcel.
Will this increase in traffic cause safety concerns?
Yes, it will. And, and what I mean by that is, as I stated, those turn lanes on Federal Highway, the, the back of queue is, is pretty long, both northbound to westbound and also southbound to eastbound at Ocean Avenue. And any additional vehicles that would like to enter those turn lanes will likely have to stop on the through lane, which creates a safety hazard.
The property as it currently exists, is it going to experience these traffic problems and issues in the event that the abandonment is improved?
They, they will experience those problems regardless, but they will be exacerbated if the abandonment occurs.
In your 35 years in experience, have you worked on any road abandements?
Yes, I have.
Approximately how many?
You know, I, I haven't counted them, counsel, but I will tell you, they're not very common. In 35 years, probably maybe 10 or less.
Is it a common thing?
No, they're not very common. And as I stated before, you need to do a detailed traffic study for each one of those cases.
Which has not been done in this case.
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you. I have no further questions. I'd like to cross examine Ms. Radigan.
Counsel, could you chime in on this?
Well, yes, they have a right to, cross examine is kind of a terse term. It's, it's, you know, it's in court litigation. They do have the right to ask some questions, you know, of staff and the, and the applicant. I trust it's not going to drag on, I think, but we'll hopefully get
This will likely be one minute of questioning.
This is, we're currently at eight and a half minutes, so, all right, I'll, I'll resume the timer when Ms. Radigan begins.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ms. Radigan, your staff put together a report recommending approval of these abandements, correct?
They did.
And that's part of the record already, I believe?
It is.
In your staff report, I see that you got no objections from engineering, public works slash utilities and planning and zoning, is that correct?
I believe the staff report has a section that says that we are pending approvals.
Okay. I don't see anything in here regarding public safety, correct?
So the way these projects are usually circulated is that the whole package is circulated to both police and fire. So they would have gotten the abandonment request as a package for the whole project.
And in your staff report, that is part of the record regarding the abandements that you are seeking approval of, it states nothing as to public safety, is that correct?
They, it is covered within the master plan and site plan report.
But not part of this subject matter?
Not specifically in this staff report, but again, this is an accompanying application and request towards the site plan. So it is within that report.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Pleasure.
All right, thank you. At this portion of the hearing
Oh, I, I still would like to finish my presentation.
All right, that's fine, you have a few more minutes.
No worries, I appreciate it, thank you so much. So as you've heard from Mr. Vargas, the traffic will increase dramatically for my client's property and essentially prevent any further development of it. And this is not just a conceptual thing. As part of the documents you have in front of, actually with affiliated, there are documents on their own letterhead in front of you where they were seeking to build a 125 room hotel on my client's property. This is likely not going to be possible if this abandonment is improved. So essentially, what the city commission would be doing if it approved this abandonment would be preventing my client from its ability to have the highest and best use of its property. It would be locking it in to its current usage and its current density. And that is going to materially impact my client and its ability to make the best use of its property economically now and in the future. So by cutting off this road and getting this approved despite it not being presented when this project was initially brought forth and initially improved, because there was supposed to be a bridge and not an abandonment, the city is going to be taking away the highest and best use of this property and materially harming my client economically. In addition to that, as you've heard from the traffic engineer, you are going to be, I'm sorry, the abandonment is going to be causing significant traffic concerns, significant exercises in traffic by taking away routes getting to and from this property. And that is going to cause safety concerns. And that goes into the very last item here, which is whether or not this abandonment satisfies the elements of section two point G point three of the city's land development regulations as it pertains to access. The question that has to be answered is does the subject land provide a legal means of access to a lot of record subdivision or development? Would the vacation or of abandonment cause of, or result in a permanent stoppage, interruption, or an unacceptable level of service for the subject lot or on neighboring lots, subdivisions or developments with respect to police, fire, other emergency services? Well, you just heard from city staff that as part of the backup materials for this specific agenda item, you have nothing as to police or fire or public safety. That has not been analyzed. Furthermore, there's been no traffic study done to determine what the effects of these abandements are. It is the burden of the applicant to be able to satisfy that these elements of the LDRs have been met, and they have not done so. There is no substantial competent evidence, which as I'm sure your city attorney has advised you, is required in a quasi judicial hearing such as this. And without that substantial competent evidence, this abandonment cannot be permitted. I appreciate your time and thank you so much. Thank you for letting me present here today.
Thank you, perfect timing. All right, that concludes this portion of the hearing. We're now going to proceed to public comments specifically on these items. If you would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium now. And as always, we will take digital hands raised up until the very last person in the chamber has spoken. And as always, it's three minutes per person, please state your name for the record.
And I just ask that anybody who wants to have their testimony considered sworn, just acknowledge on the record if they've been sworn or not, thank you.
All right.
Valerie Pleasanton, Boynton Ace Hardware, 510 East Boynton Beach Boulevard. Yes, I was sworn. So I would like to request that the commission tonight delay the approving of the abandonment, at least of the north alleyway, which is the one bordering my particular area. And part of the reason why is because we still have not had an agreement with them regarding how it's going to be worked out. We have met with them, yes. We've made suggestions, yes. I'm very hopeful that there is a way that they can configure the alleyway so that we can use it to get our access onto Fourth Street. There is no way that we can prosper as a business if we cannot have access out onto Fourth Street for the trucks that bring the merchandise that our citizens in our city need and want on a daily basis. The fire trucks from your city department will not be able to pull in and successfully pull out if you abandon that alleyway and block it off. I'm basing some of my concerns over the fact that in the picture tonight, which I was under the impression that we were going to have redrawn to show that we would have access, is still not redrawn, that's from a couple of weeks ago. And just before the last commission meeting, they stated that we would make some changes and we would be able to work out a deal. Well, the same picture is up there, so. You retain at this point the stick that compels them to work with the, the neighboring property owners. And by rushing into this decision to push through this abandonment right now, I think you're giving away your stick. Our meeting with them is in a couple of weeks, you know, very conveniently after the abandonment. You know, I don't think that we're going to be able to come to an agreement if you take away all of the incentive, you know, for them to make an agreement. And I would like to point out that having watched city commission meetings over the past 50 years or something, one of the things that I've seen over and over and over again that led to bad decisions is people rushing through their decisions just to appease a developer. You know, you were talking about health things, you know, every time you guys rush through your, your thought process, it ends up making bad decisions. So just think about that, please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Barbara Riddy, I was sworn in. Ace Hardware has been on Boynton Beach Boulevard for decades. The thing that concerns me as a citizen is who did the due diligence? Where was the due diligence? Who went to Ace Hardware and said, if we do this, how does it impact your business? Who was supposed to do that due diligence? City staff? If so, it didn't happen. Affiliated, a half-hearted attempt. What I heard the previous lawyer say were, was very tempting things, highest and best interest, highest and best use, result in permanent interference and cause a big financial impact to the business, the, it's the burden of the applicant. A lot of the things that that attorney mentioned, I believe would pertain to the Burt Harris Act. We poked around, that's what we do when we research things, we find things out. So I think it would be a good idea to table eight B particularly in defense of Mrs. Pleasanton and Ace Hardware, because there's things still to be worked out. And as she says, if you approve it tonight, where's the incentive to continue to work with her? She could always park her semis on Boynton Beach Boulevard. You know, you want to hear, hear from some residents about the semi that's parking on Boynton Beach Boulevard and the additional expense that she would incur in having to haul heavy things from Boynton Beach Boulevard into her store instead of conveniently beside her building where she's done business for decades? I don't know. I, like she says, I think you're kind of rushing in this. Let's, let's take a breath. We don't always have to say yes to developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in-person public comment speaker. Now is the time to approach the podium. Seeing none, we're going to go online. Mani, is there anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, there are no hands raised.
All right, that concludes public comments. We're now going to proceed back to city staff. I would like to call up city staff, Ms. Radigan to the podium. And of course, the applicant will be speaking next. Ms. Radigan, if you could address the comments that have been made.
Yeah, I think that what might be helpful is how the process works when we do get abandements along with other applications. These applications are submitted and routed concurrently. So a traffic study was submitted along with the master plan and the site plan and that entire package, including the request for abandonments. We heard the community design appeals, the height exception is all routed together through the entire DART team. As a part of that team, we do have police reviewing, we have fire reviewing, the city engineer reviews those projects, planning reviews those projects, utilities reviews those projects, and then Art and Public Places also reviews those projects. Through that review, we do circulate comments. The planner is the hub for those comments, they are vetted through planning, and that process repeats itself a couple of times until we go to P and D Board and, and ultimately in front of the city commission. So a traffic study was reviewed by staff. We do have our city engineer here who did look at that study. And ultimately, staff did find that it is meeting the review criteria and we are recommending approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Radigan. I'm going to turn now to my colleagues if they have any questions for you, Ms. Radigan. Now would be the time to do so. And after those questions are addressed, we'll proceed to the applicant and then I'll turn to you again for questions to the applicant. Commissioner Hay, would you like to begin?
Well, yes, you stated all those different departments. Is that the norm that we approach the traffic problem or study for the city? Is that, is that how we do it? We don't get a, a traffic engineer or, or whatever he called himself. The, do we have a traffic engineer or do we go to the county or can you talk a little bit more on that for me?
Sure, I can say what I know and I'll call Gary to fill in any blanks because he is the, he handles the department that reviews them. Traffic studies are required in terms of the submittal. So we do get them and it does have to be done by a licensed engineer. It is reviewed by our engineering staff. We do work with the county for the county to produce their review of the project as well, but that is a different requirement. The county has to review it in terms of their concurrency requirements and on their roads. And then we also get a traffic study that is reviewed internally. Gary, am I missing any part of this process?
No, you, you got it all right. Just one other thing is I, with this process, I hired
Just need your name and if you were sworn.
Gary Dunmire, city engineer, and I have been sworn. With this process, I did hire an independent traffic engineer to review the traffic study and review it and see if there was anything that I missed. And all the questions that were raised by the traffic engineer, the consultant that I hired were passed on to the client and they had been addressed.
At the last meeting, in our first, first reading, we did, I do recall that we said we were going to get with, I mean affiliated was going to get with Valerie of Ace Hardware Store. And I like to know, it sounds to me like that did not happen and that it is scheduled for the future after tonight. Is that, am I saying that correctly?
So I, I will not speak for the applicant, however, I can say that we have
Can I, can I at least hear from the applicant just on that particular question?
Absolutely. Commissioner, yes, we have been in touch. And this is far more complicated than just, we just changed the plans. So we've had, been having ongoing meetings with city staff, trying to understand what is doable. And one of the other elements that's brought into this is the access is going to be involving the tenant that we're going to have just to the north base, or sorry, just to the west base hardware, which is Hurricane Alley. So that, that was the, the time that worked for everybody to get together. It's going to involve a much greater discussion and we, and you require this as a condition of approval. We're community builders and we're here to work with the adjacent property owner and find a solution. And I believe that we will find one that, that they're happy about. But like I said, it's going to involve more people and a lot more detail than, than what we could provide in just a matter of days.
Well, you do know I'm in favor of this Pierce project, okay? But the thorn in my side from the very beginning, and you know it, okay, has been that alley. Okay? I, I, I still from, forget, not, not forget about you guys, but forget, not, not forget about you guys, but if I wasn't considering you guys, I do not like the idea of closing off an alley. We already know that, okay? So I have some concerns, I would guess, that I don't feel comfortable that all the options have been explored. I, I hear what the owner of Ace Hardware is saying that, that you have not sat down at the table and, and tried to work this thing out. I think I brought it up at the last meeting if a dump truck or the garbage truck or 18 wheeler were to pull up in there, they would have to back out. Okay, and then that's, that's not easy to do, even for an experienced 18-wheeled driver. Uh, I understand that Hurricane Alley is, is going to have people sitting out on the south side uh, and having a movie available to them. That's the big advantage that I see. But does that overweight uh, the concerns I have about that alley? I'm not so sure. I, I, I don't want to ho- hold this project up. But I don't want to make a major blunder either. Uh, and so I would like to feel comfortable. I don't know how the rest of my commissioners and colleagues feel, but um,
Commissioner Hay, if I, if I could make a recommendation um, for the commission to discuss, it was discussed um, in part at the last hearing also. Uh, so currently the condition of approval regarding this alleyway, so there is two different things that we're talking about. The alleyway uh, is what Mrs. uh, the Ace Hardware owner is discussing. And then there's first, which is uh, some of the other comments that you heard today. So regarding Ace Hardware, there currently is a condition of approval that says that they will continue to work with the owners. It is within the commission's power to revise that condition of approval to read um, a cross-access agreement shall be entered to between the, the adjoining properties. What that would do, what that would do is allow throughway access. And I can also tell you that in working with affiliated, we have seen drawings that would allow for that to work and meet code. So we do think that there is a feasible solution to allow for the deliveries for Ace Hardware. Uh, and a rolling gate, so it's not a, a pass-through the entire time to allow uh, the restaurant next door to have her outdoor seating. So there is at least within the realm of code, a feasible solution uh, to that alleyway. Um, if the commission wishes, they can revise that comment to require that cross-access.
So what I hear you saying is that if we approve this tonight, we still have leverage of movability in discussing this alley piece.
You would need to revise the current condition of approval from saying continue to work with Ace Hardware to read, provide a cross-access agreement between Ace Hardware and the, the um, Kim Kelly property. And what that would do, just so you know how that happens in the process, it means before um, that affiliate could get permits, they would have to provide staff a cross-ass, access agreement signed and, and recorded.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
My pleasure.
Uh, that's all I have right now. Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Uh, I stepped out for just a few minutes and from what I did pick up, this cross-access agreement was something I heard last meeting. Um, so I'm glad you're bringing that back up. Uh, Vice Mayor Cruz?
Hi.
And this is part of city. I mean, we had the applicant come up, but you can ask whoever you want, whoever.
Yeah, I, I have a question for the attorney, city attorney.
Okay.
So I do have some concerns with the abandonment of the alley. Um, I, I understand we have two abandonments, right? Two abandonments.
There are three areas that are being abandoned. First and two alleys, one to the north and one to the south.
Okay. Um, this is my question to you, city attorney. If in fact, I know we had somebody come up earlier and talk about, we had an attorney come up and, and speak earlier and um, give a presentation. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and we're making sure that we are protecting ourselves from any potential liability or litigation in the future. I mean, we do know that we want to develop our downtown, of course, and we want to move this forward. I know it's been a long time coming and I completely understand that. Um, but from the city side, we need to make sure that we are covered. So my question for the attorney is, if in fact, there is a lawsuit, will any of the obligations such as surrendering of the land be stalled beyond all appeal periods? Are obligations stalled until all the appeals have been dealt with?
Are you asking if someone files an appeal or lawsuit about your decisions? Does it mean that we cannot process anything until the lawsuit is completed? Because typically unless there's a stay of some sort, there's no legal obligation to cease moving a project forward.
So even, even if there was to be, and I'm not saying there will be there, there, I hope there will never be. Um, but just to be safe and clear, if there were to be a lawsuit in any way, shape or form regarding these um, takings per se, theoretically speaking, would any of the obligations that we have agreed to with developers, including the giving of the land, would that be stalled? Like would we stop that for, until all the appeals are done with so that the city is safe?
Well, if, if any of these decisions are challenged and there's a reversal, it's going to affect the entire project. Right? So it, it would maybe undo these uh, theoretically. I mean, again, I'd have to see. I don't know what the grounds would be, you know, there's different standards depending on the lawsuit and I really don't. Um, and I think the lawyers know what they would file, what they wouldn't file, but um, if, if it's a challenge to your decision, an appellate decision, when there's certain deference to the commission, but it wouldn't, if there was a, if a decision came down to quash your decision, would send it back to you to reconsider it based on what the court said. So it would, if that would potentially stop a process if something was reversed. Um, doesn't mean that in the meantime, people can't continue to progress towards constructing it or whatnot. But if the decision came out adverse to your decision, um, then they would have to be dealt with and that would, um, that would, I would feel would stop the project or at least cease the project, at least that part of the project until that issue was resolved. A takings case is a lawsuit for damages. It would have no effect on the project moving forward directly. But it would be a claim saying that you did something and it caused damage to my property. I heard someone mention the statutory, you know, Burchett Harris and there's been uh, takings cases and um, you know, taking roadways, creating different routes, doesn't necessarily create any um, takings claim. You know, you're not, you don't have a right to every access you want, the best access, et cetera. You just have to have, you know, um, it, it can be circuitous, create different things, but uh, um, and then for Burchett Harris, it's a high standard. There has to be, it can't be speculative. Um, it has to be a vested right to what, what you're doing. So um, again, I don't, not, we're pretending to know all the elements and all the facts. But a, a case for damages would not stop the project per se, but you know, it would be a claim for damages.
I, I don't think that was the question. I think, I think the question was, would our obligations as a city to give away the land, for example, be stalled until all of these potential issues were resolved or would it not?
There would be no stall unless there, someone got to court to say, stop moving forward with your project. But if, but if the decision to give away the, the land, like say abandon these roads was reversed or stopped, and yes, that would stop it if a judge said, stop it. But in the meantime, no, it, just, just the filing.
Time and it could be the point where we would not be able to return if there was already construction in that area.
It could, yes, you know, but it would take some time, typically few months to a year if there was a challenge and, and the court were decided.
How can we protect ourselves? And I'm asking you as a city attorney, how can you as a city attorney protect the city from any potential liability? In this specific case of what's being brought up today, because you know, we have to make sure that as we're developing, we're not rushing through things and we're doing things in a way that is equitable, in a way that is responsible with the taxpayers. We don't want to create any potential avenues or allow anyone to squeeze in any potential liability for lawsuits. So how, what can we do as a city, as the city attorney? What would you advise that we do to protect ourselves?
Well, um, you can't guarantee the outcome of a lawsuit, right? So unless we had some sort of um, I, I mean, I, I, maybe the applicant would suggest something to protect the city, but um, you know, your decisions are always subject to challenge and I can't say that, you know, I, I wouldn't let you do anything reckless, but I can't guarantee any outcomes. But you know, the standards that you're, that, that, that you were asked to consider under quasi-judicial as far as due diligence, law and evidence, courts are going to look at this record. Um, and they're gonna, and they're gonna determine whether you had those, you met those three criteria. I can't, I don't think anything can be done to guarantee that a, a judge will see this case the same way you will, except for the fact that they're they're not to substitute their discretion for yours. Um, or reweigh the evidence, um, or reconsider like the credibility of witnesses, those kind of things. Judges cannot hear second trials. So, um, but on, on damages, um, unless.
Would it be possible to potentially share the liability? So the city alone is not stuck with a potential issue. I mean, I'm not saying there is, there could not be. It's possible that there isn't. It's possible that this is not valid at all. But I'm just trying to.
It is possible. You can ask the applicant to, you know, protect the city in, in the event of the lawsuit. Yes, that is something, but it's not something that is required by code or anything. But you know, you can see with the applicant, when they come up to speak to you, what they're, they've, they're hearing your concerns, they have their lawyer here and, and let's, and, and they can answer those questions directly if they're willing to provide the city some assurances.
Yeah, what, what I don't want, and just, just putting it out there, and I'm not going to say much more after this, but um, what I don't want is that for us trying to create a wonderful downtown and develop it, you know, we could also theoretically speaking, projects could be made without the abandonment of alleys in a general sense. Now, if the project has changed to become where it is something that's necessary to abandon those alleyways, then and we are making that decision ourselves and we have to ask ourselves, like, could this be a problem for the city in the future? If it's not, great, but if it could be, then it's something that I think we should just at least think about and consider. Um, I am going to leave my comments at that and see what the rest of the commissioners and the mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, we're going to move on now to Commissioner Turkin. If you have any questions for staff, they're at the podium.
Um, yeah. I want to, I want to talk about Valerie and Ace Hardware. Um, I, I like the idea of changing that language back. Would, would that fulfill you? Yes. Um, I'm okay with that. If, you know, when it looks like the applicant wants to speak.
Uh, you, you're, you're talking about entering into an access agreement, which would provide them access. Absolutely.
Yeah, my concern is the local residents.
Sure.
You know, and uh, that's a small business, has been here for quite some time. You know, I don't appreciate the theatrics and the threats that we're hearing here, the same thing we saw with the height limitation, you know, I will not be bullied. I will not let this commissioner be bullied. Because every time someone says, oh, I don't, I don't want this, they're going to threaten with a lawsuit. And so what my priority is for the people who live and sustain small businesses in the city. You know, and from what I understand, I think that, that a tenant in that position may be leaving soon. Um, you know, so I, you know, I'm not going to be bullied or intimidated. Um, my focus again is going to be on Valerie and Ace Hardware. And so what would make me comfortable is what makes her comfortable. And uh, I would like to see the willingness for that. Um, if, if, if you can speak on that, if you guys would move forward with her.
Absolutely. So, and, and I want to be real clear. The reason we didn't offer that up on the last one, because we didn't know, we're not technical. We hadn't had time to, to go through it with staff. Um, since we've gone through it uh, during our last meeting, we're very confident that we can make that happen. And so we're fine moving forward with an access agreement and, and working with her so that she can have her trucks uh, continue through the alleyway. Absolutely.
Can I call up the owner of uh, Ace Hardware? Or can I just get a, we're good? Are we good with that? Okay.
I saw the head nod.
All right, good. Um, I would like to also call up the applicant's representation and just hear what our thoughts are on what's been presented.
So maybe if staff takes one podium, applicant takes another, that could work out.
For the record, I'm Michael Weiner. Attorney with Sex X and Kaplan. Um, there are no blunders and you did your due diligence. Uh, as you heard from Amanda, you had numerous studies and reports. I took a look at the information that was handed to you tonight. And it wasn't like we didn't discuss this at a different meeting and there wasn't a period of time in order to prepare for this meeting. And I'd like you to look at the map that they handed you. Please. So the map says that there's five options for ingress. Number two doesn't go into the property, number four doesn't go into the property. I don't, I don't see how that works. You don't have to be a traffic expert to understand what goes into a property and what doesn't. Um, we prepared options and I can hand them out to you now. I don't know how much time you want to take studying this, but we feel comfortable with this. There are three in. We have 12. We have one for the applicant, for the intervene or there are the remainders. There are three in before, there are three out before, there are three in afterwards and three out afterwards.
There's more coming.
I suggest, because I know that you want to move on with the agenda as quickly as you can or as efficient as you can, that you compare the maps and see which is right as to the naming of the options to get in and the options to get out. So they fundamentally made a mistake when they testified. And that undercuts that it was ever substantial competent evidence. Next. We do not have a traffic study from the traffic expert. We only have his testimony here tonight. His impressions, impressions are not substantial competent evidence. You heard from Amanda. You saw how many times this was reviewed by how many number of individuals it was reviewed. Way the two. Some impressions on a map that's incorrect or all the effort that you took up until this moment at all the public hearings by all of your staff and the outside people that you consulted. There is substantial competent evidence on this far beyond what was presented here tonight. And it wasn't as if they didn't have notice. They were at the last meeting. Um, they have no right to complain. Let's move on. It might have been a nice presentation.
I'm going to ask you to pause for one moment, counsel.
I just would say that, you know, there are just, to be fair to the, the interested party on the rebuttal, there's been some additional evidence made and I think a couple of minutes to the interested party, just to clarify or ask some questions would be appropriate, at the appropriate time.
Okay. So after Mr. Weiner is finished, uh, we can hear from the interested party.
And again, it would be to question about this, would not be to present anything new.
Precisely. So they just have an opportunity to respond. Mr. Weiner, if you could please continue.
You'll give me a moment, please.
Sure.
I did have a copy of your ordinance here. Let me see if I can find it. Oh, among the papers, it has decided not to be here. I don't know if I attended to you then, when I handed out these papers. I need uh,
While Mr. Weiner is uh, getting pre- prepared here, uh, can I just speak to my colleagues for a moment? Um, I heard what was said from staff. I heard what was said from staff, Commissioner Turkin. I'm, I'm on the same page as Commissioner Turkin here and, and staff. I am very much comfortable with that amended condition of approval to have that cross-access agreement be part of that condition. So I just wanted to gauge where the rest of you stood on this. It sounds to me that this is a solution to ensure that, is it Pritchett? Am I pronouncing that correctly? Her business continues and that they do in good faith, continue to work towards that access agreement. So I'm comfortable with that. I think that is a very good compromise. And it becomes a condition of approval. So it's not based on feeling or what I want to, but quite very much required legally. I wanted to hear from all of you, where, where are your thoughts on this modified condition of approval?
I got it.
I believe that's what I was saying from the beginning.
Excellent.
Okay, that this would be a condition of approval because I don't want to hold a project up. By the same token, I don't want to make a big blunder here for down the road, which is the vice mayor brought up, that we, we want to do our due diligence and we don't need to rush this. We do have a, a long-term owner here, entrepreneur, who's been with us for decades and decades. And I want to do right by Ace Hardware. Okay? So we, we need time to really sit at the table and, and, and discuss this further. So I'm okay with that being a condition of approval.
Excellent. And Commissioner Kelly, it looked like you were shaking your head on that. Was that, were you in agreement?
Yes, I think that, um, you know, I think that's a compromise that the applicant has, has offered to, to make that, you know, to keep this moving forward and to make that work. We've been working on this for a long time now. This isn't something that we're rushing into, but I think that that will keep the ball rolling. So I'm fine with that.
All right. Vice Mayor, did you want to add anything to that? We can always come back. Commissioner, hey. Vice Mayor.
This, I, this is like the first time that I see these pictures that we were just literally just given.
All right.
What I, where my heart is, just, just so everybody understands, it's like, I don't want to put the city at risk of any liability. And I think that most people can agree with that. I do want to see this project go forward because I know it's been a long time coming. And I know that the applicant has been through a lot of sessions with us, has gone through a lot of different, jumped through different hoops and soared to, to make this happen. My only concern is just to make sure that the city is protected legally. That's it. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I don't think that there's any malintent from wanting to protect the city.
Not at all. Vice Mayor, that's excellent. We all strive for protecting the city, of course. So thank you for pushing.
So then with that being said, we're, we're addressing one of the alleyways. Does that address both concerns or are we addressing only one concern?
So with this modified condition of approval, we're addressing the alleyway concerning Ace Hardware. It sounds like part, both parties are in agreement. I saw the head nod and the thumbs up back there. And also affiliated is also in agreement. Staff recommends it. So for at least Ace Hardware, that seems to be solved or resolved.
What about the other concern that was brought up to us by the attorneys in question?
Absolutely. Let's circle back to that just in a moment, just because Mr. Weiner was in the middle of his presentation. Now I see that he's ready. If he could please continue. And then Vice Mayor, let's absolutely circle back to that with staff.
I wonder what the Gettysburg address would be like if Lincoln dropped his notes. I do apologize, but it did get buried after all the paperwork was handed out. So the, first of all, let me, let me address a couple of things. You, you have done your due diligence. That was Amanda's testimony. It is not Amanda's alone. There were other hearings at which there weren't court reporters, but there was a tremendous amount of testimony there. We weren't required to put that on for the fourth time or third time again tonight. So you have done that. There is nothing that the city has done in terms of negligence. And, and it can't be alleged. You are going through your process correctly. There was no objection to the process. They are on one minor issue that they've talked about. They failed to supply the kind of testimony that actually gives you any concern. They just offered a few opinions, but maybe they offered whatever it is they did, they didn't do it for Boynton Beach. Because while at the end of the presentation, there was a reference to the ordinance and they talked about section three. If we, if you want to do your due diligence, let's read section three. Okay? So the vacation and abandonment of a right of way, special purposesment or other non-interest to the city shall be based upon a demonstration, now we get to the important words, that the above interest no longer serves a public purpose and there is no encumbrance which would prohibit the clear transfer of the ownership of the land. No testimony has ever said that this serves a public interest. These two alleyways, no information at all on the amount of traffic that's being carried there. All right? No one ever complained that it serves some public purpose. No one even considered that particular problem. So that's not an issue. As far as no encumbrance which would prohibit it, there's a title report. There's nothing in the way that says you can't do it. So we've hit the first part. Then it goes on to say, the following review criteria shall be used to justify an application. So A, access. Would the vacation and abandonment cause a result in a permanent stoppage? There's not a permanent stoppage to this particular property. Or an interruption or an unacceptable level of service? No testimony on level of service, none, not from the other side. It's like they just, they want to mention safety, but they haven't said anything about it. And merely mentioning the word safety alone is not a study. It hasn't said anything. Anybody could say anything about safety. Your next project down the street, somebody could say, excuse me, there'll be more people. The two lanes backing up for U-turns will be longer. Ah, it's safety. That general problem isn't related to the abandonment. So that isn't in your code. In fact, if you read the whole code, it doesn't even use the word safety. I'm not saying that safety isn't important, but abandonments don't use that word. So let's continue on with what abandonments do do because we know that there is no testimony on any of those things so far. Level of service for the subject lot or the neighboring lot subdivisions or developments with respect to police, fire and other emergency services or solid waste removal. So your ordinance is concerned about something. And it's the four things that the city wa-watched for, looked out for, the police department reviewed it. So you meet section three A. Look, I can't expand section three A. I can't say that it covers everything in the world. I can't say that we should be worrying about whether or not it's a better business for Ace Hardware. All I can say is we meet the ordinance. B, utilities. Does the subject land contain support or allow acceptable water, sanitary sewer or other utilities? Cable, telephone, electricity, which would permanently, uh, which would be permanently stopped or interrupted. We're not doing it to them. There's no testimony on that. They'll have their electricity, their water, their sewer. Of course they will. B is met. C, drainage and wastewater management. Does the subject land contain support or allow legal drainage or drainage or wastewater management for such lot or neighboring lots or subdivision? We're not stopping any of that. No testimony on it. It is, doesn't happen. So we aren't doing anything with respect to drainage and wastewater management. A, B and C is met. D is conservation. Does the subject land contain support or allow the means for conservation or presentation, preservation of flora or fauna? Well, it's paved roadway. Of course it doesn't. D is not applicable. The ordinance is met unequivocally, without question. And there isn't any testimony to the contrary. Now, if at this late stage, somebody wants to come up and start talking about, oh, well, it may not be unsafe. That goes back to the review that your staff did. And they did thoroughly, not just two minutes in a microphone with a map that may be good or not good. They did the studies. You heard Amanda. But for tonight, and I can only do tonight because they're threatening you, no substantial competent evidence. All we need to do is this. And the word safety isn't even mentioned there. So exposure of the city. No, quite honestly, the exposure of the city is next to nothing, is nothing. Why? Should Jeff and affiliated be brave enough to commence this during the pendency of a lawsuit? And a judge were to say, I'm sorry, for what, for whatever, I can't imagine the reason, but for some reason, a lightning bolt strikes, this fellow decides that this is what he wants to do. If that were to occur, the only exposure is he'd have to remove everything. He'd have to start all over again. That's the exposure. I've been through these things before. I've seen people build during litigation. I know how they bite their fingernails. For you? Nothing. They don't punish you for this. You didn't make a wrong decision. You made the decision based upon the evidence that you had at hand at the time. You're involved in a quasi judicial hearing. You acted as a quasi judge. There is no exposure for the city. They can't sue you for giving the wrong order. Now, let's talk for a moment about something else. They want to bring a lawsuit because for one reason or another, they think their property is worth less. Now, that is a whole different lawsuit and they didn't even discuss the cases. The cases are quite clear and you probably already had enough of me. I, I have the cases tonight. And those cases always say that taking has to be substantial. You have to cut off access. There is no testimony about the number of cars that go up Fourth Street. There is no testimony about the fact that people won't be able to reach it. There have been cases so bad, State Road 84 was actually cut off. A little fast food restaurant couldn't even get to State Road 84. Their access had to be two and a half, 2.3 miles longer. At best, you're causing 800 feet. And guess what? Wasn't enough. They could still get in and out. So, fine, I get it. At the last minute, a property owner, not the actual tenant, wants to come forward and they want to tell you with good lawyers and a competent traffic engineer who just didn't do a study, had to just give his opinion off the top of his head. They wanted to come in here and make a lot of noise about this. But you are doing the right thing. The substantial competent evidence lies with your staff. Your ordinance does not describe the factors they wanted you to focus on. And the cases where they threaten you with a lawsuit concerning the, the value of their land, the cases are constantly saying, you have to end access. So under those circumstances, I don't know, I, I hope you rest comfortably. Take a look at the two maps. I am not testifying as to those two maps. I'm just handing you those maps. You can see for yourself what you think about the quality of them. Under those circumstances, I, I think you can absolutely proceed. And I don't think that you have any concerns or worries. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, Mr. Weiner, I want to allow any final questions or comments from my colleagues to you or to Mr. Burns while you're up here on the podium. After which I do want to afford, as our counsel has advised, a response from the other interested parties. So Commissioner Kelly, I see your hand is up.
We haven't even gotten to me yet.
That's true. That's right.
No, we're not done with questions because I haven't even asked one.
They can always come back up. Commissioner Kelly, go ahead.
Um, Gary, this is for you. You've reviewed the traffic study. You had a traffic engineer review the traffic study. What was determined as far as the usage of First Street or First Avenue? Is, or, or what did your traffic study show?
When we reviewed the traffic study, the recommendations that they had were included into the plan. I don't recall from the top of my head what they said and what special, excuse me, and what special, if anything had to be done. I, I don't recall that anything needed to be done on First. No turn lane was necessary, nothing like that.
I mean, we're, we're not cutting off access to the property at all.
No, no, we're not. If, if anything, we've made sure that vehicles or the necessary vehicles can get in there. The fire truck, they had to run an analysis on a fire truck. They, you know, they use auto turns and the fire truck can get in there and turn around in the roundabout and come back out. So, you know, there's no access issues.
Okay. Thank you. And then my colleagues all covered, I think we've covered Ace Hardware, so I'm good with that. So that's, that was my question was what, what did that study show? And there's no concerns as far as traffic engineering because we know the project, we know we're building downtown. We know there's going to be traffic. We understand that. We know that's a, that's something that is, is going to happen. So, um, so I'm, that's fine. Yeah, I don't have any other questions right now.
All right. Thank you. Was there any other follow-up from my colleagues? Commissioner Turkin?
I, I just want to, um, tell the vice mayor, we all share the same sentiment as far as protecting the city. So you mentioned that there would be an issue of valuation of land, correct? That's what we're hearing. However, I think it would be fair to say, with this project going up, wouldn't that increase the value of land? And all the other projects we have going on in the city, you know, I, I can't imagine it would decrease the property value. And so a Bertie Harris would be affecting the valuation of a property, right? So it does not make, and I'm not a lawyer, I'm an attorney, that's why you're here. I'm a practical minded guy.
It's not on.
Got it. Let, let me be practical for a moment. Anybody can sue anybody about anything. Okay? The case law clearly speaks about affecting access in a much greater fashion than you are affecting access tonight. And that is a completely separate lawsuit. I, I do not think that even if they were to proceed under Bert J. Harris, that they could find a way to get any kind of traction with respect to that. It is, they're, they can still develop their property in any way they wish. So under the circumstances, um, sure. I acknowledge anyone can do anything about whatever, you know, actions you take. But you are not proceeding recklessly. They have a huge burden. And the case law and Bert J. Harris doesn't support what it is. If they want to rattle their sabers. In fact, I would say with respect to whatever they do when they come back up, the only new item that we presented is the map. Their, their, their testimony should be about whether or not their map is right and this map is wrong. And that's it. I, I would hope that it would be held to that. But so, yes, I'm certain they will continue their saber rattling. It's their right. I don't, I don't question that. But that should not dissuade you from making a decision based upon evidence that you have been, has been presented to you over a long period of time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, this, this project's been going on for two and a half years almost, right? How are we just now hearing about this? Why are we just now hearing about this? I, you know, there is an ulterior motive, obviously. There's, there's something fishy going on here. And again, I, I, I don't appreciate that we're, we're, we're getting all this at the last moment. If there was a valid concern, I think there would be dialogue. I think there would be collaboration and good faith effort to show that we all want to have a mutual agreement. And I don't see that here. What I see is a last minute rock throwing is what I see. And so I, I don't appreciate it and it's, um, it's not good business. It is not good business to do this. It is not good business to do this. You know, I would have appreciated all this, you know, months ago. And, you know, I just, I just want to say, you know, I think the representation for the applicant really nailed it on the head. You can sue almost anybody for almost anything here in the United States of America, right? A lawsuit doesn't impede anything solidified. So I, you know, I'll leave my comments there. It's just frustrating to see this because this is not the first time we've seen this. And so, you know, I just want to leave that sentiment out there.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Turkin. Commissioner Hay, you had your hand.
Yeah, I was going exactly the way Commissioner Turkin just went there with his comments. You know, I would like, if we call back up the other lawyers and the traffic engineer, I just want to know why now? Wow, we've been working on this since, what, 2019 or what, something like that, a long time. And we're just coming up with this so-called traffic study. And I really don't like receiving things that the last moment that I'm supposed to make a judgment call on and vote on. Yeah, I know it's a major decision. And I'm just wondering here, if you go with the condition of approval and we talk about this further on down the road, what happens if you come to impasse? What's the impact to the Pierce project if that happens? And that's something that I kind of feel is a possibility. I don't know, Jeff, if you have any comments on that. But I need to hear, I need to feel a little bit better than I'm feeling now. Could you enlighten me a little bit?
Absolutely, Commissioner. So the first part, I believe you're talking about the Ace Hardware.
Yes.
Yes, so our condition of approval is that we provide, we enter into an access agreement. So before we go applying for our building permit or getting our building permit started, we have to have an access agreement that gets our trucks through. And that's what she wanted. So we're going to be required to accomplish that. Now, we, since the last meeting that we had, we spent some time with staff, making sure that before we offer something up, that it's doable. And that was key to us. I didn't want to offer something up that I wasn't sure whether or not we could do. I want to be able to go to them and say, this is something I know that we can do. We've worked with staff to make sure that the condition of approval to enter into an access agreement accomplishes what both parties want. And that's what we've agreed to do. So there should be no reason why, you know, we can't move forward and provide.
That's good, Jeff. Don't go any further. You might mess it up. Valerie, are you still here? Do I have a thumbs up? That's all I need to know.
Commissioner Hay, if I could please respond just based on process wise. So if for some strange reason, an easement agreement cannot be entered into, Valerie says she wants $8 million for this easement to sign this paper, whatever it is. If something happens and the two parties or three parties involved are at an impasse, the recourse would be that the conditions of approval alone would come back to the commission for editing. So we always have a recourse to come back and revise that condition. Hear what has happened, why it couldn't happen, and see if there are any ways to amend that condition to make it feasible at that time. So there is still a mechanical way to fix that.
Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. I would like now to hear from the other interested applicant, excuse me, not applicant, but party. Let's give your time. I'm going to set it to about seven minutes. That should be more than sufficient to respond to the new evidence. And I will begin that now. When, yes, check the microphone, please.
Got it, thank you. And I'll have Mr. Vargas as well be able to respond to that since it was his analysis. That's been impugned by this new evidence put forward. But to first answer the question that I believe Commissioner Turkin put forward, why now? We just learned about this. Well, the project had been going on. The project initially had a bridge over the street. It didn't have the abandonment being in there. So that's why we are here now. And quite frankly, that's why there are multiple readings when you have something like this, so that everyone is informed and able to come to the commission and be heard on these issues. So I understand this is a late hour. I understand that this project has undertaken significant analysis by this commission because it is a major project. But because it's a major project, it needs to hear from all the voices and especially the voices that are directly adjacent to where this project is going to be. And especially when this project changes from not abandoning a street to now cutting off the access. And Mr. Vargas, if you could please respond to the document that was now put into evidence by the applicant here stating that there is no difference in terms of the ingress and egress. What is your response to that? Yeah, you got to push it.
Can you hear me? I'd like to address a couple of comments that were made by the attorney, that this is based on an opinion from the top of my head or based on an impression. If you recall, I mentioned that I reviewed the report prepared by Kim Lee Horn that was dated January 26, 2017. In that document, there are many analyses, and I'm just going to read you two pages, two parts. This is the output of the analysis at US 1 in Boynton Beach Boulevard. Northbound, left turn to go towards I-95. There is a parameter there that if it is greater than one, that's a problem. It's a safety problem, not an opinion from the top of my head, not an impression. 1.4, that is greater than one, that is a concern. Let me also mention another sheet, and this is in the PMP hour, future conditions. I should mention that those analyses that were done, they did some signal optimization. What does that mean? The timing that the county has was not sufficient to process all the vehicles. They optimized it. So let's assume that the county will implement that. If they don't, it will be worse. Optimization, assume that the county will accept it. East Ocean Avenue and US 1, the southbound left turn, which will have to be utilized for U-turns. Again, that's storage, 1.4, it's greater than one. That is a safety concern. It's not an opinion from the top of my head. It is not an impression. Also, eastbound Boynton Beach Boulevard approaching US 1. The software indicated we could have a maximum of 23 vehicles stopped. We all drive, 23 vehicles stopped on a queue? That is a long queue. That's a safety concern, not an opinion from the top of my head. Let's go over the maps that it was stated that I had five options, but he said it was incorrect, that there were three. Go to Figure 2, please, if you will. And I went quickly through these maps due to the interest of time. Option 1, going south on Federal Highway, pass Boynton Beach Boulevard, make a right and a right into the 209 North Federal parcel. That's one way in. Option 2, coming from I-95. I showed that arrow in red because that option will encounter the backup that the analysis that Kim Lee Horn mentioned did document it. Go east when you get to Federal Highway, make a right and then a right on First into the property. Option number 3, which is shown in green, instead of joining that backup, you can make a right on Fourth Street, go south, and then take the roadway that's going to be abandoned, that back door. It's shown in green. There's no congestion in that area. That's option number 3. Option number 4, coming from the south. You pass Ocean Avenue, you make a U-turn at that problem location that I mentioned. Come back south and enter the property. And option number 5, from the south, you make a left on Ocean, that's shown in green. Then you make a right on Fourth and another right, that's shown in green, no congestion. There's five options, not three, councilperson. If you go to a figure 4, which is the egress, same thing. You can follow it based on that map. One important component is that if somebody wants to go to 95 from the 209, with the abandonment, you will eliminate option number 4, and I'd like to describe that one. Option number 4, you would go west on the road that's going to be abandoned. Take Fourth Street, go south to Ocean Avenue, and then go west to Third. Go north to Boynton Beach Boulevard. And there's a traffic signal at that location which doesn't have congestion. That is a very attractive option to go to 95. That will be eliminated with the abandonment. I conclude my rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. The last thing I would like to point out is we did hear from city staff and also from the applicant as well regarding that police and fire had analyzed these abandonments. That is nowhere in your record. And in fact, when you look at the entire master plan, what is in there from police and fire states that they have reviewed the site plan and the applicant has addressed all review comments during the DART review process. The fire department notes that they will be able to provide adequate level of service for this project. That's the Pierce. It doesn't discuss anything whatsoever about the properties that are adjacent to it. And that is what the abandonment LDRs look at. You don't look at just the project that is being done for the abandonment. You will look at the adjacent properties as well. And 209 North Federal is an adjacent property. And there is zero substantial or competent evidence in this record that determines whether or not that element of the abandonments in the LDRs is satisfied. Because you don't have this evidence in the record at this point, you cannot, cannot grant this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have heard from the applicant. We've heard from the city. We've heard from the interested party. The way that I'd like to close out this evening is for us to have the final word from the applicant. They are, after all, well, the applicant. So, Mr. Burns and Mr. Weiner, if you could make your closing statements, and then we'll have our closing questions for you.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I'm going to wrap this up. This has been, you know, a lot of back and forth, a lot of legal. So one of the questions was, why now, right? Why is this coming out now? Well, strategy, right? The guy that owns that property, I met him about two and a half, three years ago. He's got my phone number. He's got my email. Guess how many phone calls I got from him? Zero, not one saying, hey, I'm a little concerned about this, Jeff. I'm worried about what you're doing over here. Not one. Guess who does have my phone number? That tenant. Keep in mind, this is not somebody opposing something who is running a business on the property, who we are coming in and impacting. The person who is running a business on this property, I spoke with the other day. He's on a cruise with his wife right now. He's been to this commission chambers on three different occasions to support this project. We were meeting with him shortly because he has expressed, or the landlord, i.e. the person who's upset about this, has expressed their intent not to extend his lease, to terminate it so that he can sell the property. So I want you to, you know, realize, you know, take this for what it is, right? This is an absentee landlord who has hired a big law firm to come in here and throw a bunch of stuff up against the wall, okay? We've done, we followed a process for a reason. The process is laid out for checks and balances. We did everything we were asked to do, notices, meeting with police and fire, everybody. So I say that to encourage you to not fall victim of this charade. The city of Boynton Beach is moving forward in an orderly fashion. We look forward to being a part of it, and I hope that tonight you can vote to move this thing forward. So with that being said, I'll be quiet and answer any questions.
Let's begin on this side. Commissioner Kelly, these are closing questions and comments before we proceed to voting.
Yes, thank you. One thing I wanted to point out because it just came to me a few minutes ago when we were getting yelled at. And I know, I work for attorneys, I know, they get animated. They are, you know, a bit aggressive, but, you know, I, there's a calm way to, you can talk to people. But we'll move on. And I just want to point, you know, I'm looking at these things and we're talking about congestion. And I already said, we know there's going to be congestion. But I also want to point out for these egresses and this ingress, we're having public parking putting in, put in. And two of the places that they're saying we're going to cut off access go into a public parking garage. So you're cutting off, we're not cutting off access to the facility. We're actually not cutting off access to the building at all because they still have their driveway and they still have access to First Avenue to access their property. But two of the ingresses, at least two, go into the parking garage, which will have public parking, which the public will use to potentially access whatever business may or may not ever go in there because it's all speculative at this point. So that's one of my comments and one of my points. The other comment that keeps being brought up are these proposed drawings from 21. And I'm looking at these and it's, you know, we're sitting here being told that these are clear, that there's a bridge and the street's not being cut off. But it clearly says it's a pedestrian passage. And there's no mention that the road stays. And so I just, my point is, all along, it has been that this project was going to take this space. I don't, I'm not mistaken in that. That's been clear. So to come up now and say, this is something in 21 that was here. It's marked as a pedestrian passage, not here's First Avenue, it's not moving, it's staying. So those are my points. I don't really have any questions. I just wanted those to be on the record that that's my position as far as entrance and access to that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Turkin, final questions, comments?
I think that was a very good point, Commissioner Kelly. Thank you for bringing that up. No, I just, I'm not sure if the applicant's representation had anything to respond to. Or we want to do that after we all speak?
Well, right now.
Anything to respond to? No?
If I might, just a couple.
I mean, they're certainly welcome to, but.
Well, just to say.
I wasn't aware. Go ahead, Mr. Weiner.
Lots of testimony. Never a link up that the problems that were.
Mr. Weiner, the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Never, never any link up that the problems that were purportedly caused link up to an abandonment of this street. It was just a general discussion of the difficulties with Federal Highway. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, I think I'm pretty transparent where I stand.
Okay. Vice Mayor Cruz, final questions or comments for the applicant?
No, I think we had plenty of discussion. I asked our city attorney to let us know what he thinks, and you think we're going to be fine.
Well, I can never guarantee it, but anybody can sue, as Mr. Weiner said, anybody can sue for anything.
But it's not, it doesn't appear to be justified.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I apologize.
No, no, no.
Anyway, I'm familiar with the case law on takings and access as well. And I don't disagree with Mr. Weiner's analysis on it. It is fact driven, but, you know, again, it's that all access is not deprived from this property.
So with that being said, I'm fine with it. I mean, we discussed it thoroughly. We asked a lot of questions. We went through maps. We've been at this for a really long time, and we are working to build our downtown. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Hay?
No further questions.
All right, thank you, everybody. Counsel, I do have a question for you. There was consensus from the board on amending that condition of approval. Which item is this?
That would be for, I did confirm with Ms. Radigan, that would be item B, as in boy, for the abandonment. That's where you would change the condition from work with the neighbors to require the cross-access agreement.
All right, so we will address that when we get to B. Counsel, before we proceed any further, have we complied with all of the required procedures?
My impression is you have. You've given everybody a full opportunity to be heard and present their evidence and testimony and hear the questions from you.
All right.
And just again, for the record, all the items that were provided to you by both the applicant and the interested party this evening. the applicant and the interested party this evening are all part of the record, and the clerk has copies of it, as well as, again, the record from P and D and the record from your first reading.
Thank you, counsel. We're now going to proceed to voting item by item, beginning with item 8A. This is proposed ordinance number 23-005. May have a motion to approve this proposed ordinance.
So moved.
I heard it from Commissioner Hay, and is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Commissioner Kelly. City clerk, if you could please begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now moving on to item B. This is proposed ordinance number 23-006, second and final reading. And Amanda, did you want to add anything to this?
I, I just wanted to be clear on item B, that there isn't an amended condition of approval, as well as on item D, there are several amended conditions of approval that staff reviewed. So those could please be integrated into the motions.
Yes, we want to make sure we word that properly, counsel. I want to make sure there's zero ambiguity in this motion.
So for this one, an appropriate motion would be a motion to approve with the change in the condition for agreement, I mean, I'm sorry, working with the neighbor, property owner, to requiring the cross-access agreement between ACE and the Pierce.
Excellent. May I have that motion?
So moved.
I'm, I heard it first from Commissioner Turkin. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the second is from Commissioner Hay. City clerk, please begin the roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We're now moving on to item 8C. This is approval of the variance. Amanda, did you want to add anything before we begin with the, with the voting?
No, thank you.
All right, so this is not an ordinance, so we don't need a roll call vote. And so I'm just going to ask, may I have a motion for, to approve item 8C?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. I heard a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor approving item 8C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Again, that was item 8C. Moving on to item 8D, this is approved, the request for a new master plan and so forth. We have that motion.
So moved.
Moved with staff's recommendation being added to the-
As presented. So the conditions of approval with the, with the amendments as presented.
Okay.
So moved with the amendments as presented.
Second.
All right, I heard the motion from Vice Mayor Cruz, and I heard the second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. All right, so we're moving along. Moving on to, I did, was that a sigh? Moving on to item 8E. May have a motion to approve item 8E, and this is the request for the four community design appeals. We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly, a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of approving item 8E, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. All right, one final item, this is item 8F, to approve the request for the height exception to allow for the freestanding parking garage egress staircase. May have that motion.
So moved.
Moved. Wait, can I make a comment? We need a second.
After the second.
Okay.
So the, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Cruz. Is there a second? From Commissioner Hay for discussion? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Super quick, just, Jeff, remember we talked about the balconies not looking like the cages and just being like the straight? I just wanted on the record that you guys are going to do the regular balconies on the Pierce, and that is it. We talked about it during our meeting.
Yes, so, so you preferred the, the picket, the vertical picket versus the mesh?
No cages, no.
Yeah. We're fine with the vertical picket.
Thank you. That's all.
All right, before us is a motion and a second to approve item 8F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, all items pertaining to the Pierce has been approved. Thank you.
Wow.
Took you guys long enough.
All right. I know there are people leaving the chambers, let's give that a few seconds, but we still have one more item on the agenda. All right, the next section on the agenda is legal. Under legal is proposed ordinance number 23-007. It is a first reading, and as such, there will be no public comments. Counsel, if you could please read the item into the record. And ladies and gentlemen, I want to ask you to just quiet down a little bit, we still have one more item on the agenda.
Okay, ordinance 23007, I just wanted to say it like that. An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the employee's pension plan by amending Article 2, Division 5, by amending Section 18-126 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances entitled Disability Retirement Benefits, further amending Section 18-142 entitled Secretary of Board Designated Providing for Conflicts, Providing Perceivability, Providing for Codification and Providing for Effective Date. I do have an attorney from my office, Julie Clark, who worked on this. If you need her, she can speak on Zoom, but the understanding that I have of this ordinance is it does two things, it allows disability retirement benefits to be determined using workers' comp as an option, and it also provides clarification for the city clerk to provide secretary duties to the pension board.
All right, thank you.
If I've misspoken, anybody can step up and tell me, but I think that covered the summary of the ordinance with that.
All right, thank you, counsel. Are there any questions for our counsel on this item? Nothing from Commissioner Turkin, Commissioner Kelly, seeing none. What about Vice Mayor and Commissioner Hay, any questions for counsel? All right, seeing no questions, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion to, I'm sorry, one second. It's a roll call because it's an ordinance. City clerk, if you could, well, let's first have a motion.
Yeah, in the motion.
We have, I heard it from Commissioner Turkin, second from Commissioner Hay, and of course, let's go ahead, city clerk.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Turkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right. All right, that concludes all of the business for this evening's meeting. Thank you, everybody.